Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting of the Hampton Bays Water District Commissioners to order on this third day of May 2018. Please rise. Join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to be applied to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Supervisor Schneiderman.
President.
Councilwoman Lobstat.
Here.
Councilwoman Scolera.
Here.
Councilman Bouvier.
Here.
And Councilwoman Ziegler.
Okay. And we are joined by Robbie Keane, who is our director. Is that the title?
Superintendent.
Superintendent, thank you. And Vinnie Werner, who is, what, assistant or deputy?
Assistant Superintendent.
All right. So we do this, what, twice a year?
Yes, now and again in October.
All right. This is our, so we've all put on our Water Commissioner hats today. So I guess it's, there's a requirement that you update us twice a year on the district. So today is that day, one of those two days. So I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. We're really just getting started, and I mean, we've started pumping a fair amount of water because people are turning their sprinkler systems on and doing a lot, filling pools and whatever. So it's, it was, there's not really that much to talk about at this point, except the filtration system that's going in. It seems like we are right on target for the mid-June, the end of June. The GAC unit should be delivered May 7th or May 8th. The building is up. All the blow-off pits are in, the concrete pads are all in. The guys have really been very diligent of showing up and doing their job. So once that's up and running, that'll help us out immensely.
Do you have to go through any training in terms of how to use the system?
Not to my knowledge, Jay, no. I think it, once they get going, they're just gonna run.
Okay. And there is blow-offs now that are installed on 1 and 3?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it's gonna be blown off, each well is gonna be blown off before it gets into that filtration system.
Okay. And well, 1-2 already has it, but that's gonna be replaced?
That's gonna be obsolete, it's gonna be out.
It's gonna be brand-new?
Yep.
All right. Waste-out.
Yes. Now, the other thing that's really, that's happening in our benefit too is that by the Board of Health ruling, the motors have to be up higher, okay? The wellheads have to be up higher. Two of those wells have diesel backups if we had a storm or whatever. So we have to raise them up. That wasn't part of the original deal, though we are doing it, it's not, we can take that right out of our working budget.
Okay.
But that's being done. We haven't been able to use either one of those in 1-2 in a year and 1-1 in two years. So it'll be a factor if any storms actually come and hit.
Okay. And so now you'll be testing quarterly 1, 2, and 3 as well as you're gonna test on the other side of the carbon filtration system? And then you're gonna test at the entry point as well?
Well, the entry point is right on the other side.
Right, okay. That is the entry point?
Yes.
Okay. So that becomes the entry point which is now after the filtration?
Yes.
And that's a blended?
All three wells blended, yep. And the tank. If you guys, I made a water quality report, this is what we have to hand out every year at the end of May. Every taxpayer will get one in Hampton Bays. But on the last sheet, if you look, that's not going out to the public, but it's what we're doing, going over and above the testing that we're required to. Julie, if you want to.
Do you need this for?
Christine?
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Actually, you know, I'll take the other one, I'll leave it to the Council, let's give off. So when does this go out?
This goes out, has to be out by May 31st.
Okay. Last page, you said?
Yeah, the last page has what we're doing, going over and above. That was the agreement that we had, that we would go do more, a lot more testing.
I'm sorry if I missed this, and forgive me. These are, you can do blow-off testing on these?
This is our required testing, okay?
Right.
Each one of these. Now, we'll also keep test, we're gonna test the wells. This is at the wellhead itself that we're testing, not in the system.
Okay.
Once it goes through the filtration system, it's supposed to be zero detection.
Right.
So, but we'll, you know, we'll.
You know what I'm saying? Can you test these without, with the capability of being able to blow it off so it's not in the system and I'm scared of that?
What happens, the well comes on, it goes to blow-off.
That's what I wanna make sure, because I know some of the wells don't have that blow-off mechanism.
That's what we're adding right now.
Okay.
As part of this filtration system.
Wonderful.
This looks good. The table that's here, Detective Parameters, is that, is that reflective of the entire system? It's not on a per-well basis?
No, it's not.
It's System 1? Or it's just telling what, the things that you look for?
That's the things that we look for.
All right, those are the things you test for? Okay.
I'm, this looks good.
Okay. And I see it has the one note in it toward the end from the first quarter of '17.
Where are you looking?
I'm looking here. And then there's a public notice here, too.
See, on that page, Jay, on page 3, you notice the violations. We were, it was a health hazard, that's why it wasn't a violation, the PFO-4 and the PFOS.
Right.
But that's, it wasn't a violation, so that's why there's nothing down there.
Right, it's not a violation. Right.
That's because there's no standard for it.
Yeah.
But it doesn't, it doesn't exist.
But it was just more of a sampling violation, yeah. All right. Any other questions, any other things we need to cover?
Just the other thing is, we flushed the entire system. We ended up this morning at roughly 6:30 this morning. The guy's been working from like 10, 11 o'clock at night, early morning, so we wouldn't disturb anything. So the system's been completely flushed.
Is that something you do every year?
Yep. The hookups with Suffolk County Water on the east side of, they're in, being drawn up as we speak. John's actually working on it.
That's the automated gate valves?
Yep.
Okay.
And Dune Road, the extension that we promised with Suffolk County that we have drawn up, that's right now is at the Board of Health, looking for their approval.
Okay. That's the connection from Tiana?
To Ponquag.
To Ponquag.
Yes.
Okay.
So these three wells that are out of commission right now are available. You've mentioned about our storm vulnerability?
Yes.
Could you elaborate a little bit on that?
Well, we still have 1, 2, 3, 4 diesel generator backups, 1 gas, the rest are all diesels. But these two have been out now since those wells, but they will be up and running once we go back to system.
All right. So the vulnerability is a lack of being able to meet the demand for water in the event of?
Honestly, John, usually when there's a storm, our water usage plummets.
Yeah.
You know, we, when Hampton Bays lost water back in, was it January or February, they lost all the electric?
January, yeah, electric's out.
We only had to run one pump, really, to get it going. The only problem is in the summertime, if it's a hurricane, but the water usage goes down, and people aren't really worried about doing anything. They don't have electric to run their sprinkler systems and do all the other stuff, so it's kind of very minimal.
Yeah. I mean, the reason I'm bringing that up is that I wanna solicit from you guys your storm preparedness as part of the Sandy Task Force of County review, because we're in a bit of an unusual situation having a Water District in Hampton Bays. You guys are unusual in that respect. And what your input to that process, I think, would be useful, at least your protocols and what you do, et cetera, et cetera, so I can get that information back to the task force, if you have that. Or we could sit down and maybe talk about it and try.
We do have something written up.
All right. That would be great. If you could forward that and then I could get those.
I'm not, John, are we legally allowed to do that? The vulnerabilities?
Stuff that you would share with the county.
Chair of the County Board of Health.
No, I mean, as far as your storm preparedness, your protocols.
I believe you can share that. There are some confidential things in the VA ERP that you're not supposed to share.
If you wanna redact that, that's fine, just let me know.
No problem.
All right. Thanks.
During Sandy, five days we were out of electric. We had two wells running, and one was the 5 field, and that was on gas power, natural gas. And on one in 2 field, we'd go up there and turn it on and turn it off as we saw the tank level four.
Okay. Good.
That's quite an extended period, huh?
It is. Plus, you had those interconnects to Suffolk County Water, though.
Yes.
And how many, there's three of them?
Yep.
We have three.
And we had three, right? So there's, not that we added additional ones.
Okay. We have three interconnects. One, we were supplying them when they had no water over east of the canal, far east of the canal.
Okay.
Which comes off Oakhurst Road. That's a meter that was going to them. Then we put an interconnect on Peconic Road and Montocawee, which that fifth could feed us. And then there's another one on the west end of town, right at Jones's Road.
So we, now we have more availability of water than we had, right? Because that one interconnect was, is now coming our way as well as going their way?
Yeah, once the valves are installed, because right now we do everything manual. Yes, it would be really for fire flow.
Okay. Okay. So it typically wouldn't be open unless the pressure drops?
Exactly.
On either side?
On the west side, we're not putting in a valve. That is just a manual valve opened up.
No, I mean, the, on.
Yes, if they need water, it'll go back to them.
If they need water east of the Shinnecock Canal, it would flow back to them.
Yes.
When did the Peconic and Montocawee go in?
Peconic was probably installed in 2006 or 2007, and the one off of Oakhurst is way before my time.
Did we, after we had the issue with the main break under, you know, in the Shinnecock Bay, and that was repaired, and I know they, the company that had supplied the lines took care of that.
Yes.
Did the Health Department ask us to do some addition, put some additional gauges in?
Which is all installed, that's down at Oakland's. It's what, if the pressure drops off there, we automatically get a call out if someone's, because that's really, we're only supplying the few businesses.
So we did everything that they wanted us to do to keep, and that's sort of temporary anyway, until the new main comes in?
Till the new main goes in, yeah.
Do you think we'll keep the old line as an emergency feed?
Backup, or you don't say? You know, that's a good question. I don't, I don't know if Suffolk County would want that, because it is under the bay. It's not, you know, it's not directionally board, it's lame.
You have to keep it from freezing, too, which is challenging.
Yeah.
You know, if it's not in use, it's just sitting there, you're gonna have to keep it empty.
Right.
Right. But maybe having it there, I mean, it probably makes sense to remove it once the, you know, because it's, it's an obstacle, it's obstruction.
I'm sure it's pretty easy enough to remove. I mean, it's up on top, and some places, it's floating three feet.
Right. It probably has some value as scrap metal.
I'm sure. But the company also, that paid for everything to be fixed under the bay, also offered to us, once we get the approval and find the funds to run the main down, to give it the piping at their cost. Because we were talking about putting plastic in, and they felt that it would be an insult to them. So they would supply us with the same kind of pipe to run down Dune Road.
Okay.
But the main would run the same way? As the, the main would run the same way as the existing?
This would, actually what we do, Christine, is hook up on Dune Road at Tiana Beach Club?
Right.
And then come, run right down Dune Road to Ponquag. That's where there's the interconnect.
Oh, okay, okay.
Not the one that goes under the bay.
Okay.
Probably in the sand along the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's an easy install, I think.
Well, the problem is you have a lot of water there, and it's not very deep.
Well, you'd be, the pipe is probably gonna be sitting in the water.
Yeah, most likely, but there is standards you have to fill with the Board of Health.
Is a metal pipe the right type of pipe if you're in that kind of salty, saltwater condition?
Jay, we, before we even ran the main under the bay, we cut out the pipe, the original pipe that supplied all of Dune Road, even to Gin Lane, and the pipe still was a half-inch thick of solid steel.
Yeah.
Because it can't corrode, really, because it's under, it was under the water.
When are we supposed to be doing all that, just because we have all that work going on with Ponquag right now?
It's just in the process. There would be nothing with Ponquag, it would be.
Is it something that should be done together, is what I'm asking, or does it?
Are you talking about Ponquag Pavilion?
Yeah.
It would have nothing to do with Ponquag Pavilion.
Okay. All right, it wouldn't run, because I thought it was running, too, there.
Actually, right as you come down the bridge?
Yeah.
That's where the interconnect is, right there.
Oh, okay.
Actually, it's the old side road.
Oh, it's right before.
So it would be no big deal.
Okay.
Right by the park, Ed Warner Park. Okay. Any, anything else?
No.
Okay. Are you getting a lot of calls or questions, or people?
No, not really.
Okay.
You know, we had a few, just a couple dirty water complaints, but that's for the flushing and stuff like that. Other than that, things have been fairly quiet.
Okay. Is there anybody on private well services there?
Yes, which we submitted twice to the Board of Health, asking, they asked us who was on there. We went to GIS, they printed out all the stuff, we sent it to them. We were gonna offer them the free hookups, like you and I, we've talked about, and the Board of Health, we're waiting on their approval to do anything.
Okay.
Right? We've definitely contacted them twice, and we haven't heard anything.
Okay. Have we contacted the property owners, or the Board of Health is doing that?
Board of Health.
Board of Health is gonna do that, but they're waiting to finish their testing north of the fire training grounds in Hampton Bays.
All right. Anybody, any other questions?
No.
From board members? All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn our meeting of the Hampton Bays Water District Commissioners.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Scolera. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good morning. I'd like to call this work session of the South Hampton Town Board to order this third day of May 2018. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to be applied to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. All right. Says on my agenda, oh, we gotta do the roll call first, sorry, sorry. Sandy, will you call the roll?
Supervisor Schneiderman.
President.
Councilwoman Lobstat.
Here.
Councilwoman Scolera.
Here.
Councilman Bouvier.
Here.
And Councilwoman Ziegler.
Okay. So the 10:30 item on the agenda is the review of the draft agenda. Does everybody have a copy of it?
Mm-hmm.
And there's a few, a few other additions. I'm not sure you have it. There's two in a staple packet, and then I got past two more. I'm not sure if you have, I think you have the other two. So there's four total to add on. We'll get to those after we get through it. Do this as quick as possible. This is the agenda for the May 8th meeting. That would be next Tuesday at 6:00 PM, right here at Town Hall. And there are two public hearings. The first one is considering amending the Town of Southampton Community Preservation Project Plan to consider acquisition of lands of Palma in North Sea, and amends the CPF Management and Stewardship Plan to include that property. The second one is a public hearing considering amending the Town of Southampton Community Preservation Project Plan considering the acquisition of lands of Serenity LLC, Remsenberg Spionk, and amends the CPF Management and Stewardship Plan to include that property. All right. So 29285, the first resolution in the packet adopts a town one-year agricultural use agreement for '18 and '19. Julie?
ID number 29342, authorization for supervisor to sign application and contract to accept 2018 New York State Office of Children and Family Services funding for Southampton Town youth activities. ID 29296, authorization for supervisor to sign application and contract to accept 2018 Suffolk County Youth Bureau application for Southampton Town Youth Program. ID 29338, authorized contract with Nursing Sisters Home Care, DBA Catholic Home Care to provide expanded in-home services for the elderly program, EISEP, to Town of Southampton residents.
I just wanna remind the board, if you have any questions about these preliminarily, just, please just interrupt and we can discuss it. So 29373 authorizes purchase and installation of acoustical ceiling at Police Department. John?
ID 29336, to authorize a supervisor to execute a management and stewardship agreement with Wildwood, it should be Bowling, 16 Incorporated for the property located at 3939 Lake Avenue, Northampton. And this, just for your information, is a continuation on a very successful licensing agreement we had with the owners of Bowling and Lake last year.
Okay.
Works very well. So we wanna continue the good work.
Are we getting more parking with this one?
No, we'll have the same parking, the same conditions under it.
I'll talk to you after.
Yeah. I mean, certainly, we have been talking about that, but I have to talk with you.
Yeah, because we're working on it a lot.
All right. John, you have the next one, so.
Okay. ID 29337, authorize a supervisor to sign a non-exclusive license agreement with Peconic Paddler for the use of kayak launching ramp located at 120 Peconic Avenue, Riverhead.
So that's the, that's not the one we have on the other side of the street? That's the one that they use for commercial purposes?
Yes.
At their property? That's the property they're looking to redevelop, right?
Right.
So they would give us?
It's a non-exclusive license agreement with them?
Access to the?
For launching on that, on the property.
Who listens?
Was this in response to the issues we were having with behind the building?
Right. Yep.
Oh, they are, no, we're allowing them?
We're allowing them to use it.
Okay, not us.
And I know Christine had been allowing use of the ramp, I don't know if this is the same?
It's sort of been an informal thing, and she wants to make it formal.
Okay. So, yeah, so we're not using their spot there. They probably launched at our spot in the past, right?
They've been launching at a spot.
It's been doing it for a while.
And the community has had issues, as have others, with where they've been launching. So I'm not, I'm just trying to figure out if this is putting in another place to give them an option to go somewhere, a different place, and they've been launching, which has been an issue, or is this formalizing the same spot?
Okay, we can try to get some clarity.
We can just get some clarity.
Clarify what I was asking, Christine. You wanna point out to Christine?
Yeah, I love.
All right. Julie?
ID 29371, authorize the purchase of another sound meter, LCD 30 to 130 decibel range for use in code enforcement from New York State OGS contract with WW Granger. As you may remember, last meeting, we got one of these meters. In further discussions with code enforcement, it made sense to get one for each side of the canal.
Okay. These are the ones that detect the low base?
For the base, yeah.
Low frequency.
All right. 29353, this authorizes the purchase of maintenance renewal of Great Plains software with Interdyne, AKA Enterprise Solutions. I think there's an extra AKA?
AKA and K.
Also known as, also known as, also known as.
And what's the, I don't understand, AKA?
Interdyne, AKA, no, should be an A instead of an N. NKA, AKA Enterprise Solutions. They must be.
So there's basically three times, they're not called AKA?
It looks like AKA is their name, if this is written right, if it's written wrong. Bless you.
I don't think so. I think, I think they're known as, I think they're known as Enterprise Solutions, not AKA.
Well, the NKA is Nolan Advanced. Oh, no, no, that's not.
AKA Enterprise Solutions.
It does say, though, the whereas, AKA Enterprise Solutions.
Yeah, so it's right. It's just that N should be an A. That little N should be an A.
An A or an F?
The little N.
Formerly known as.
Could be an F.
We'll check.
Could be an F, could be an A.
So you're saying that?
So we don't know, let's.
So you're saying?
Quite a range.
So you're basically saying Interdyne, AKA, is their name?
Yes, yeah, it could be. So that has to either be an A or an F.
I have no idea.
Formerly known as.
Jay, will you check all the NKAs and AKAs?
And can we just go back for one second to the one before it?
Sure.
The meter. Just in term, I mean, I realize it's $4,000 relative to the scheme of things in our budget. It's relatively small, but just in terms of the financial impact, it says GL determined by the Town Controller's Office. I just wanna get, and I know that the Controller's gonna be giving us a report on where everything's going, but when we do blanket things like that, it leaves us not knowing what's being taken from what. And I would just prefer a little more specificity. I'd prefer them to determine a GL code before we vote on it.
If you go forward, ID number 29363, it gives some additional information, which is 23.
Way forward, hold on.
And I see that's referenced in the financial impact, 29363.
Hold on. Okay, so.
What page is that?
So then it's 29. Why didn't they just put that in here? Pay-as-you-go. It's, it's the same thing, it's a pay-as-you-go.
I was assuming it was pay-as-you-go, so.
So then, that should be added, so if they don't mind just amending that, so it's clear, which is fine, just as long as we know where it's coming from. It's perfect.
Well.
Can we do that?
Am I waiting on someone to amend that?
If we can maybe just check with the Controller's Office if that's what they intend, and if they do, we can just put it in there, so it's clear that that's what they're doing.
Why do you need two resolutions? Why do you need two resolutions? One to, for the purchase and one to use pay as you go money to do it? I think so.
Yeah, that's what I think what I'm reading here.
So you're just saying in the financial impact rather than referencing Resolution 29363, which says pay as you go?
Since it says to be determined by, something by the comptroller, a GL code, you already did determine it if you're telling me that that's the same thing, so put it in there.
I think though, because you'd have to do the other resolution first. I don't know.
Doesn't make sense. They should, they either need to.
It does reference the 29363, so I mean, we could try to sort of.
Yeah, they need to just fix that.
You want Len?
I, I don't know, the fix you want to do which.
To clarify, to fix the?
Then we might have to do 29363, we might have to do that first.
Maybe we do. Just would make more sense.
What's the other one?
It's on page 23.
On 23 is 29363.
Far away.
Yeah, it is.
Far, far away.
So you want to put in?
Instead of having a GL code to be determined by the comptroller's office.
You want to put the GL code?
If they know the GL code, put it in.
03-99.
If that's what he intends.
Well, Len's on his way in here, so, hold on.
He might, he might want to take it from somewhere else, but then identify it.
Reference.
Had one, had one resolution.
Find the resolution.
Right, and then take out to be determined by the comptroller. And just say see fiscal impact of the one before it.
Well, let's see what Mr..
The afternoon, when people are starting.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, whoa, whoa, so I, did I, did I read 29353?
You attempted to. I don't know. We were stuck on AKA.
That was right, exactly, so. All right, 29372.
Here's Len if you want to, while you're on this.
Which, which has an FKA, formerly known as, not also.
Yes, you see that?
So Len, just a, just a quick question, and it's, we know that we're dealing with a relatively small amount of money relative to our budget, but, um, the first, the noise meter resolutions, there's one resolution on with a fiscal impact to be determined, a GL code to be determined by the comptroller. Then it references far away, because it's page 23, um, that it's coming out of a pay as you go. That's fine, but if this is a, if we already know it's a pay as you go at the fiscal impact.
It could just say pay as you go. It's part-time pay as you go because that's code.
It's totally fine. I just wanted, I just didn't want to have a GL like, because I know we're getting a report from you, but after these things start to add up and we don't know where they're coming from, if you can.
That's fine. Yeah, we have part-time pay as you go because it's code that's using it.
That's fine. See, let's want to hang out.
Well, I got a lot to talk about.
So you're changing the?
Later.
You just got to take the language from.
23 and insert it into.
Exactly. So, it should be, yeah, the, yeah, just take the financial impact from 23 and add that as the financial impact.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay? All right, now, with the FK, this is 29372, authorize the supervisor to execute 2018 contract extension with, uh, Lyro Engineers. Lyro?
Lyro.
It's Lyro Engineers Incorporated. FKA Sydney B. Bound and Sons. LLP. AKA.
Think that away from.
Brown, it's funny, all these AKs.
It's actually FK.
Bound.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, the first one's FK, it's, it, it sounds like somebody had a lot of aliases. We've arrested so-and-so, AKA, so, so AKA. All right, Bound A E and T for the Town Hall Accessibility Project Entrance Ramp and Elevator Modernization. Okay, John?
ID 29379, authorize the supervisor to execute a contract extension with Spectre Manufacturing.
ID 29339, authorize the supervisor to execute a contract extension with Suffolk County Office of the Agent for expanded in-home services for the elderly.
29378, authorizes the supervisor to execute agreements with vendors for performances at Good Ground Park.
29376, authorize the supervisor to sign an amended access agreement, I'm sorry, an indemnity agreement as it relates to dredging at North Sea Harbor. Hold on, hold on.
Is that the new one?
This is interesting, hold on. Okay, that's with that one property owner. Okay, fine, all right. 29375, awards and authorize the supervisor to sign contracts with, uh, uh, Reli Electrical Corp. for the electrical portion of the final phase of the Nathaniel Rogers House. Actually, just going back one for a second, I know we're having issues at Conscious Point with dredging. That, uh, that inlet there, um, is getting completely filled in. The county, we've got to get the county somehow out there on some emergency basis, or the boats, uh, Conscious Point won't be able to get out of there.
I had heard that their equipment had broken down.
Yeah, so, yeah, maybe I'll try to get the status of that. Frank, maybe you can find out the, uh, North Sea inlet, not North Sea Harbor.
At the Maritime.
Is it not, it's not the same one, right? Conscious Point.
Conscious Point, yeah.
Okay, which is different than the other one, or not different than the other one, same harbor? Maybe that's.
Talking about the new tax issue.
Yeah. I guess it's the same inlet, right? As the North Sea Beach Colony in there?
Uh, North Sea Beach Colony is a little bit.
On the bay.
On the other side of the Taurua.
Right.
On, uh, west of that.
But the dredging that gets done for Conscious Point?
It's got the same problem though. It's got the same problem as saying that the equipment is not working.
Yeah.
They're in the same location, but it's a different.
I would imagine they staged the equipment there. There was a breakdown, so it's put both things in arrears right now.
Why do we have to change our easement?
But we need to find out.
That easement, I think it's for the person to say.
Completed prior to April 15.
The county has had a regular maintenance project there for a number of years.
Uh, they need to extend our easement agreement because of the breakdown in the equipment, so that it covers the additional time they're going to need now as a result of having fixed it. Yeah.
Right.
All right.
So. I want to, I think we're at 29365, or did we do 29375? Uh, yeah, I read, I read that one.
Yeah, I was about, then you went back. Okay, so can I go?
Yep.
29365 is a 2018 notice to bidders for deer fence materials.
ID 29370, 2018 notice to bidders for Town Hall Accessibility Project Entrance Ramp and Stair. This is for ADA compliance.
That is, Frank, the status of that, that's, so we're, this is, this is the, we're going out to bid for the, that's for the south side ramp?
The Town Hall Accessibility Project Entrance, yeah, it's the ramp that comes up the ADA compliant to get into the building from that side.
Okay. 29343 amends the 2018 adopted budget for community preservation. 29352 amends the 2018 adopted budget for police equipment. 29345.
Can I go as a co-sponsor on the police one?
The police equipment? Sandy, would you include Christine?
Absolutely.
Um, 29352, uh, 29345 amends the 2018 adopted budget for trustees. 29346 amends the 2018 adopted budget for various departments. 29347 amends the 18 through 22 capital budget for Nathaniel Rogers House. 29329 amends the 18 to 22 capital program and budget for Little Neck Road Pier. 29363, authorize the part-time fund pay-as-you-go purchase for those noise meters. 29324 accepts resignation of Eric Bromhoff and Paul Gabista, Ubista for the Opioid Addiction Task Force.
29330 appoints Raymond D'Angelo, co-chair of the Hampton Bay Citizen Advisory Committee. 29248 is an authorization of cost reimbursement waiver for the Franco Food Truck Festival from May 18th through the 20th, 2018.
Can I just, uh?
Want to go back?
Well, Ray D'Angelo is co-chair with, oh, so Kevin, who's the chair we appointed? Kevin Springer is chair?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
29335 is an authorization of cost reimbursement waiver for the Hand Aldrich American Legion Post 924 Annual Memorial Day Parade on May 28th, 20.
Did you do 248?
29212.
Got a lot of stickies.
Did you read 248, the, the food truck festival?
Yeah, I did. I read that. I forgot pause, sorry. 29212 is an authorization of food truck vendors at the Southampton Animal Shelter Pause in the Park Special Event on May 18th, 20, sorry, May 19th, 2018. 29335 is an authorization of cost reimbursement waiver for the Hand Aldrich American Legion's 924 Annual Memorial Day Parade on May 28th, 2018 from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. 28912 is an authorization of cost reimbursement waiver for the Hampton Bay's Fire Department Parade on August 1st, 2018 from 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM.
Hold on one second, uh, I think I want to co-sponsor the American Legion Parade, the Annual Memorial Day Parade.
Okay.
Add me on, Sandy.
28913 is an authorization of cost reimbursement waiver for the Hampton Bay's Fire Department Carnival from July 31st to August 5th of 2018.
There's a bunch of these. I think I'd like to co-sponsor also the.
Sure.
The Fire Department Parade and, uh, the Fire Department Carnival. That can be added up. Okay, and now we're up to 29328. Authorize community preservation tax refund pursuant to first-time home buyers exemption for, your guess is as good as mine.
I was waiting for you to try and take a shot at this.
What do you take?
No, I was waiting for you to do this.
Wait, wait, I think, I think John knows it. I trust John on this.
Xian Wang Shu.
Yeah.
And Bai Feng Shen.
Yes, nice.
I, you know, John, can you read this when we get to it?
I just did.
Can we, can we?
I can do it.
I can do it.
I'm making John the lead sponsor on this. Can we, can we do this, or he has to read this?
No, no.
You're going to make me do it? Xian Wang Shu?
Xian Wang Shu, Fen Shen.
Xian Wang Shu?
And Bai Feng Shen.
And Bai Feng Shen. It's as good as it's going to get.
You know, we play the.
I'm still going to make John read it. I know, well, John.
I'll come in, John, while coffee will go over.
Your wife is Chinese.
Yes, she is.
Do you speak any Chinese?
I do.
Is that, I do, is that Chinese?
Do we, do we, do we, yes, yes, yes.
All right.
All right.
That's cool. All right.
Take us out of this, please. 293.
Moving on. I don't speak a word. I don't.
Out of many towns.
29326, authorize waiver of conservation board fees for Hampton Bay's Water District. ID 29377 rescind town board resolution 2018-339, authorize the waiver for showmobile fee for Franco Food Truck Festival.
29341 is 2018 part-time salaries. 29321 appoints Charles Manning to heavy equipment operator position in Waste Management. 29095 appoints Christopher Scotto, Skodo, uh, to sanitation helper position in Municipal Works Waste Management Division. 29215 appoints James Durie to environmental analyst position from Social Services List. 28838 appoints Karina Gorey to administrative assistant position in Land Management. 29094 appoints Michael Bagley.
Oh, I'm sorry, do you, hold on just a moment, we need to, oh.
What's?
Was this changed already? We just need to, uh, in direction from the Personnel Department on that resolution.
Which resolution?
The one that we just read about appointing an individual to the administrative assistant position in Land Management. The result.
28838.
288.
Third resolved clause. The third resolved.
It shouldn't say Building Department, it should say Environmental.
It should say Environmental Division instead of Building Department, so I'm just going to make that change if that's.
The third resolve?
Oh.
It's the third resolved, yeah.
It says administrative assistant in the third resolve in Land Management-Building Department, that's supposed to be dash Environmental Division. Okay.
All right, uh, I did 2094, that's appointing Michael Bagley to Labor Position Waste Management. 29323 appoints Michael Edens, I'm sorry, not Michael, Mitchell Edens to Sanitation Site Crew Leader Position, Municipal Works Waste Management Division. 29366 appoints Raymond Swanson to Labor Position Waste Management. 29322 appoints Ronnie Strange to Construction Equipment Operator Position in Waste Management. 29367 appoints William Heisman to Sanitation Helper Position in Municipal Works Waste Management Division.
ID 28964, notice of public hearing to amend Town Code Chapter 330-10 Table of Use Regulations listing pre-existing marinas and boatyards as a permitted use in residential districts and to designate the expansion and renovation of pre-existing marinas and boatyards in residential districts as a special exemption use. This is what we had the work session on this week.
All right, 29286 is a notice of public hearing to consider acquisition of lands of Robusto Riverside and amends the CPF Management and Stewardship Plan to include that property. 29152 amends the Town of Southampton Community Preservation Project Plan and CPF Management and Stewardship Plan to include the Palma property, North Sea, and authorize the acquisition. 29089 amends the Town of Southampton Community Preservation Project Plan and CPF Management and Stewardship Plan to include the Serenity LLC property.
On that resolution, I'd like to be added as co-sponsor.
Okay, and Rastler Bridge Bank and authorize acquisition. Sandy, will you add Gossman Bouvier on as a co-sponsor?
Thank you.
Okay, and, and let's go to the other ones. Let's do the staple packet first. 29380, authorize the supervisor to sign any and all documents with New York State DEC for amended registration to have a solid waste management facility, to have.
I don't understand this.
Solid waste management facilities within the Town of Southampton. I don't think we.
Can we have a discussion about that?
Can we take the word, the A out, to have solid waste management facilities within the Town of Southampton? So.
Can we still have a discussion about that?
We had a.
A is correct.
To have a solid waste management facilities?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, yeah. You're right, I'm sorry.
Is this on for work sessions now?
Okay, got it.
It's just, uh, authorize signing a form.
It says a form, but it's also, but it's saying that we're going to be having. The reason for registration of the town's facilities can handle the materials that are both on and off-site, including but not limited to municipal solid waste.
Recyclables.
Well, for, yeah.
So it's basically, it's a continuation of using the.
To using the what?
It's our four sites.
I just want to confirm that that's, because it sounds a little.
We just have to keep them registered as, uh, transfer stations.
The existing facilities.
But it should say that, existing.
So what do you want it to say?
I wanted to make clear that it's for existing facilities and that we're not changing anything, what we're accepting or how we're accepting it, and we're not creating any new sites.
It, basically, it's, the registration permits us to have these up and running.
I know that, the way it's reading.
It mentions so, it mentions the four sites, though. Hampton Bay, North Sea, West Hampton, and South Harbor.
I just want it to be clear, we're not.
You want it to say for existing, solid waste, is that okay?
And current operations.
Okay, you're the sponsor, is that acceptable?
What's that, I'm sorry?
I just want to make sure that that's acceptable with the sponsor.
Oh, yes.
Sure, why don't we just add in existing?
For existing.
For existing and current operations.
Okay, I'm going to take out the words to have a?
No, I, well, yeah, just take out a, and then in the first whereas is required to submit a, a form for its current transfer stations.
Under existing operations.
Or existing transfer stations.
No, this, whatever, existing.
Or existing transfer station.
Or current operations.
Okay, could you say it one more time, please?
Want to just, if, we have agreement, we'll work on it offline, I'll give it to you.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Good idea.
Thank you.
We, we couldn't open a new one without DEC permission.
Right.
So this is.
It's really housekeeping, because we have to, we have registration periodically to be sure that we're.
We'll try to insert a, a line in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, you'll get back to us.
Jim, you want to?
Sure.
I'll just, just put existing in front of transfer stations, for its existing transfer stations.
Yes.
I think that one word existing solves the issue. Right, Christine?
Under current operations, yes.
Okay, let me get back to it. We, I, Jim's got it.
Okay. All right, 29382, authorize this town attorney to reimburse NYMR, the deductible for property, for a property damage claim paid in 2018. And then we have, uh, 29093, appoints Ryan Corwin to Waterways Maintenance Mechanic 2, position and trustees. 29383 ratifies stipulation of settlement and general release and accepts resignation. And that's it. Any, any questions about the upcoming agenda? Let's go back to our work session agenda. And, uh, at 11 o'clock, which is right now, we're going to do the wireless communications needs analysis. So I would say let's hold off then on the 10:45 item, the, the updates, we could do that later, with time permitting, and let's go to our 11 o'clock item, wireless communications needs analysis. And we are joined by Janice Scher, our Assistant Town Planning Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Kyle's also here, and he just. Jim, did you guys meet on this with, um, early?
No, it's not.
Let's pick up. I don't know why I thought it was made for us.
This is sort of an impromptu meeting at the moment, because we were having a meeting about it and realized that really we just need to discuss this more fully about what's happening. And that is, just for some context, 10 years ago, we did a wireless master plan, April 2008. We, we wrote a whole new wireless code to try to encourage people to do, um, the policy of the town. The adopted general policy is instead of having 300-foot towers, we want lower, and we're willing to accept more, as long as they're not visually obtrusive. So we've been maintaining that standard on private properties, you know, since that time. Now, um, we're being inundated by requests about public property, about town-owned properties. A lot of calls coming in, can we locate here, 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 you know, and while the master plan encourages that, there's some, um, there's some gaps here and, and lack of what we understand, what we need. So, you know, someone comes in and says, hey, I have a great idea. I'll put this 20-foot pole over here at the beach and, uh, you know, and we'll have a lease for 10 years. And we're like, well, wait a minute, is 20 feet enough? Is that too mu, you know, what are the parameters that we're dealing with here? Are we allowed to do, you know, there's some public parkland, is it CPF? I just have a map produced that shows like town-owned property that is non-CPF. So we can understand where people are trying to, we did, in the master plan, I'm sorry, I'm jumping around a little bit. In the master plan, we kind of identified high points in the town, you know, three-story buildings, cupolas, you know, places where people could do these stealth installations. But, but the big place that everybody wants to do it is, you know, sort of at the ocean, places where there's not, there's body coverage and not a private property where they can locate.
Okay, is there something, just in terms of, because we did do this in 2008, and over the last 10 years, I would imagine, and maybe I'm wrong, but that things have, technology has evolved such that we may not need, but our code may be somewhat outdated or not currently what we should be looking at.
That too, but this is also, so, so why I'm here and why we're here is because we want to propose that we do an updated RF analysis, put an RFP out so that we can have that knowledge in our, that's why we did it in the first place, because when the planning board was reviewing these, these cell tower applications, and someone would come in and say, well, I need 120 feet. They had no information as far as like, what's the alternative, or what, what do we know we need, or what do we know we have? And so that's why we engaged in this.
Do an RFP for an RF analysis?
On town properties.
Which shows you where the existing coverage is on.
The first RFP is request for proposal, the second one is radio frequency.
Right, radio free, RF.
RF, radio.
Radio frequency proposal, because what's happening now is that coverage, so there's two, two ways of looking at this, or two, the industry, there's coverage as a whole across the town, they want to have coverage and cell service. That's pretty much taken care of, except for the spots that you're aware of, like North Sea, and we have these, these locations where there's gaps in coverage. Now it's all about capacity. Now it's all about capacity building, where they're trying to implement these 5G networks and these like bumped up, you know, capacities
Are they doing 5G yet?
Not yet, but this is coming.
They don't need towers for 5G.
No, they want small cell.
Right.
So we want
They're on the ground.
Right, lower.
They're lower, they're still twenty to thirty feet.
But they still need line-of-sight connection.
And that's what we're trying to get at, we want to have that backup information.
We need our code updated to reflect the evolution and what's needed now, and in terms of coverage, what is currently needed.
Right, although the code is pretty wide open, like it doesn't necessarily hem us into anything, it's a, we're, so we're getting these requests, okay, I want to put thirty feet here, or twenty feet here, or how do we know that this is the right answer, number one, and number two?
Janice, can I pack you up a little bit, so that the public understands what has driven this? You did this plan ten years ago, did you project an increase in bandwidth as, as a projection of, of what's going to happen ten years from when that report was written? Was that part of the technical data that was?
I don't know if there was a change in bandwidth, because that's just, you know, governed by the FCC and they provide that, but it really has to do with
It's also based on demand, so if we have an increase in use
Well, what's happened is this technology, YouTube, Snapchat, this, that, it's more capacity
And my question was, was that captured in your report at all?
We did know that this was coming.
They knew it was coming, but I think the
We didn't know to the extent.
Yeah.
And the inquiry, like Christine said about the changing technologies, one of the, this, these smaller poles, the, what do they call them, the something bellies?
Telebellies.
Yeah, telebellies, which are small installations that go in the parking lots, it's beaches, and they have twenty-foot poles that are pretty self-contained, they still need to be connected to electric.
They're sort of like RF microgrids.
Exactly. Those specific, although the plan does contemplate increase in, or change in technology over the time, it does talk about the DAS system, the distributed antenna systems, which we, you know, is also, we've had some requests for those recently, but I think what Janice correctly points out is it's time to go back and look at the RF to really identify where do we need this coverage, and given these new technologies, or the direction that the industry is going with these smaller poles, how does it fit into the picture?
Yeah, and I agree with that, except that part of that would be under, at least having a projection of what those new technologies might be, because it's, it's moving pretty fast, and not make a substantial investment if you know fairly, with some certainty, that you're going to have these new technologies.
Well, right, and we also don't want to recommend you get locked into like a ten-year lease for something when something may change, and so, you know, we're not the experts here in this field, we understand enough to know, we need some help.
Well, this, well, we have, through this request for proposal process, or RF process, whatever, well, we have then the ability to have somebody, because you know that when the cell tower people come in with their attorneys or whatever, they present to us a, a coverage base, that we need this, we need that, we need that, and we're sitting there like, okay, well, that sounds reasonable, but really, do you, do we know that they, they'll be able to say, you'll need, no, you don't really need it.
That's the whole point to do the
That's what they want. And, and also, as a corollary to that, you know, you may or may not be missing out on revenue, so if you're willing to rent out at least a town-owned property, you should be getting the most you can, you know, like, we also need, the other component is what's a fair market value, who's negotiating this?
Co-locating on one pole is advised, like what should it be built for?
So there's two components, one is the RF to understand, like, because if someone puts a twenty-foot pole over here, is it interfering with a twenty-foot pole over there, like, we want to make sure that there's no interference.
Or making it not necessary.
Yeah. We have multiple carriers sometime.
There's four, and now I think T-Mobile and Sprint have.
Yeah, they've merged.
So now there's three big carriers, and then everybody else is like kind of on the fringe of their bandwidths, and so, but if we were able to get, like we did the first time around, at least a snapshot of what's going on, and include in this a market analysis, so you know a fair rent, the market is, you know, because they're like, oh, I'll give you, you know, I don't want to be on the phone negotiating with these people, like, I want to know what the right price is.
Do we need a mechanism right now to prevent, like a mortuary or anything like that, to prevent
No, because it's your property.
So we can just, but what about on private property, are they doing that right now?
Private property is still the same, why we require the coverage maps, we require, now they're
Because that'll go into our analysis even for our property, because if it's already on private property, it's
Oh, you see allocations for private property?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
But really, this comes down to they're, they're reaching out to the town, which we wanted them to do, because we do want to produce revenue for the town, we said what properties were appropriate, but now what we're not understanding is like, well, how much is enough, what do we do, you know, and then how much are we going to get for this, you know, those are the things that are missing.
We need information.
We're also seeing substantial community concern about town properties.
Right, and so if we do this upfront, and someone understands what's expected, we don't have to go through this.
Right.
If we can't use town property, if we can't use park properties, then we're left with things like highway yards, and then, you know, we don't have a lot of, you have that map, just because they're not CPF-acquired doesn't mean they're not parkland, now we have to sort that out.
Right.
And if we're limiting ourselves toward, like highway ones, there aren't that many, it's a limited number of properties that we own, then you have, not the town-owned properties, but you have, other tax districts have properties, like fire departments, ambulances, those might be suitable locations as well.
Yeah, you have overlapping networks, there's a lot to this.
People expect to have a tower and a firehouse, you know, for communications. When you do an RF analysis, was it?
A lot of communities don't want that either.
It's like the, it's like the noon sirens.
More perhaps expected, I don't know, but when you do an RF analysis, are you looking at not just the availability of the coverage, but the, the bandwidth available, and whether various carriers are on that pole, because you may have a pole that's only one carrier and not going to let another carrier on it, so the other carriers
Well, as far as anything's been done recently, we require co-location.
Yeah, that most, yeah.
Yeah, cuts down on the number of poles.
Any poll that has been done since probably 2000, we've required co-location.
I think that's under the law, they're supposed to look, to co-locate where possible, so I don't think they really have the option a lot of times.
But they need more height.
Want to eliminate the possibility of tech towers.
Elimination based on the height as to how many can hang on it.
Well, yeah, because there's an EMI
So we're telling them to go as low as possible, and they have to have a separation between carriers and certain
They go around.
Well, they get interfered with.
Around, but that's one carrier going around, I think.
No, it's not, they have like a
Well, that was our initial concern, let's just say, for instance, what if Verizon came and said, well, I want to put this pole at this public land, and then the three, the two other carriers are like, what about us? We didn't think forward and to accommodate them, that's more revenue for, you know, if it, if it makes sense and it's not visually incompatible, so why wouldn't we consider that, but we don't know that, you know, and then we're locked in, and that, you know what I mean, like, I don't want to get into a situation like that.
Well, and before we had had somebody do that, Janice?
Your motivation to just go, oh, I'll write the RFP and see what we get, and, you know, we'll use it based on the last one we wrote for the propagation.
We've had multiple carriers on one unit, and perhaps what comes out of this is that you want to aggregate those rather than have separate systems, I mean, there's a lot to this, there's areas of, you know, interference, like magnetic interference, and there's some corridors where you have a lot of problems, you know, this is a big deal, but we need
But we're not starting from scratch, this is really kind of updating, because we had a comprehensive, that was a comprehensive study, we're just kind of updating this.
Certainly in ten years.
I think the basic problem is that, you know, people do want the bandwidth, they do want the Wi-Fi, fast data, they don't want to see the cell towers, but they want the access to the internet, you know, the streaming abilities wherever they are, and you can't, it's, right now, it's very hard to do both, though in, in the future, I'm told with 5G, you'll have, you know, incredible data transfer as well as, you know, minimum visual impacts.
Yeah.
You know, it's kind of, it's kind of like the airport, airport noise issue is moving toward quieter helicopters, but it's maybe down the road, you know, we're not there yet, this is a similar issue where, you know, technology eventually is going to eliminate that visual blight. It's coming, I was just talking to someone yesterday in the field, that it's, it's really, it's almost here, it's, 5G is just around the corner, I think it's already up in some places, and they're all trying to figure out how to position themselves, and that, because that may mean that a lot of those wires that are out on the telephone poles don't need to be there, cable may not need to be there, you know, the telephone wires may not need to be there, a lot of those wires that they've been maintaining may become obsolete in the era of Y, of 5G, we'll see.
But also in terms of our storm preparedness, I, I don't know if that's contained in your previous study, but when you start getting closer to the ground with a lot of these, the small microgrid within a larger grid, you know, how susceptible, how vulnerable is that, what do we need to do to make sure that we continue communications to keep us viable during a big storm event like Sandy, so that's also a big part of this as well, because, you know, you're changing a paradigm here with this new technology.
And I mean, the town, you know, getting into like broadband and Wi-Fi and these things, and hamlet centers or in public places, those are, that's a future consideration you might want to think about, and getting these people to start laying the fiber optics as part of their proposals may be something you want to acquire.
Maybe we could encourage 5G somehow, to be on the, the cutting edge, be like one of the first areas to have that capability.
Right.
It could make our area even more attractive, you know, for
So maybe we should include that in the RFP as like one component to say, tell us what the 5G network
Before we start putting up more towers, if we know five years from now, those towers will be obsolete.
Tell us what you think it was going to look like.
Be ahead of So we want like an RF engineer or some kind of, people that plan for the cell tower companies to respond to this kind of RFP and say, this is what the industry is looking for.
Yeah, because it's a transition, it's not, it's not an overnight transition, and they, you know, we have to know how that transitions to old networks and old technologies as that falls away, because it's really consumer-based for the most part, so as, as those devices change, and that, that access changes, we have to go with that as a, you know, it doesn't sound like that.
Right, right.
So we're here, good to say, we're going to put together an RFP, obviously it'll come back to the town board, and you guys will have to pass a resolution to release the RFP, but that's just kind of where we're at.
It sounds like we'd like more than just an RF analysis.
Oh, yeah.
We'd like a kind of a technological review, and trying to figure out where the industry is going and how to position the town for those changes.
And sort of a market analysis, like what kind of rents can we expect if we did these kinds of things on public property?
And, and impacts, if any, on, on our plans to revitalize areas, if we're, you know, we're rebuilding, what infrastructure we need to put in to, to support that, and
If 5G requires, what, a thirty-foot structure or pole, that's no taller than a house in the code, so
Which is good.
You could probably blend them in, and nobody would know
Yeah, but it's not a consistent height either, it's, it's, there's unique situations, so that's what I would really, that's what I would like to know, because I think that's what could cost us
We could use a little education in that, that's the way the industry is going, before we go and pop a lot of cell towers up, that, you know, could be
Yeah.
Unsightly, unsightly and obsolete.
So is that going to be a walk-on for Tuesday?
No. I mean, this meeting yesterday, talking about this, and we said, let's just put it on the agenda and talk to you all instead of
You have a walk-on here, I bet.
Oh, we do have a walk-on, however, we did discuss the Tiger Salamander study, and we, in the, rejected the RFP bids, but we've been talking to a, a firm that's uniquely qualified, that did all the Tiger Salamander work for Tanger Outlets, and we've pared it down to a Phase One, because we really have to do this iterative process with DEC, so instead of blowing it out to this huge scale, we just talked about doing one phase, and it's much more in alignment with our budget, and everything is great, but it's just, we just got it today, so
Can we get it done, though, if we do that?
Yeah, because they have to get it
Yes, that's why we got to get it as a walk-on.
So we're kind of in a hurry.
Yes, okay, so we'll move that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, um, all right, so let's, thank you guys, let's, let's do some quick updates, then if we can get through this quick, the twelve o'clock presentation on the US Open, they're not going to, I don't think, be here until twelve, so I think what we'll do is maybe we'll take a, a little lunch break or something and come back at twelve, if we can get through updates quickly, so, I'll start, so as, as you guys are all aware, we have instituted a new security system in Town Hall, the desk is operational downstairs, there is a security guard there, the town employees are now required to wear ID tags, and the public is required to show some sort of government-issued ID or school ID when they enter. Does anybody have any questions about the new security protocols? Okay, perfect, and it seems like it's going smoothly, we're going to have, right now they're doing it manually, it's going to be electronic soon, right now it's taking about twelve seconds to sign somebody in, but it'll drop in half to about six seconds, once they have the scanner in place and a, and a decal printer.
Have we gotten any feedback from the public that's gone through the process so far?
Generally, it's been positive, the first day was a little bumpy because we, people were not used to it.
Frank, I'm afraid we might not hear you, so, it was a little bumpy on the first day, but now people have gotten used to it.
And been downstairs a couple of times, there's no line buildup, the process is moving along, we're getting the same person every day, both morning and afternoon, so that person's getting familiar with the operations of the building, is more easily able to direct people where they need to go without there being a backlog, so I think generally it's going along quite smoothly.
Well, we haven't had a town board beating yet under that protocol.
We didn't, but we did have the pool presentation the other night, and although there was some little confusion at the beginning, ultimately it went quite smoothly.
Frank, why don't you stay there, because since you mentioned the pool presentation, that's the next thing I have on my list, in the auditorium a couple nights ago, and I know quite a few of town board members were there, this group, I forget the name of
Star.
Star?
Mm-hmm.
It's Southampton Town, what does it stand for?
Aquatic.
Aquatic Recreation?
Otherwise known as Star.
Star, okay. So they presented their concept for an aquatics facility at Red Creek Park.
Correct.
It's, I think, a twenty-five-meter pool, twenty-five-yard by twenty-five-meter pool, there's a therapy pool, there's like a kids' play area, and they had presented here, we had asked them to kind of do presentations in the public, and see how that goes, they've been refining their plan and their fundraising, it's, it's, you know, it's a significant amount of money that they will have to raise, I think, what, twenty-five million they're projecting to build this, though there seems to be a lot of community enthusiasm about it, and the people on the board, they, if anyone's capable of doing this, I think that they are capable of doing it. So the next steps, Frank, is they are looking to come back to us with a request to sort of reserve the land, so they can now start their fundraising campaign, they don't want to go out and raise millions of dollars and find that, oh, you know, the board's not committed to doing this, so they need the commitment now that should they raise the money, we will allow the use.
Yes, and, and a timeline for their fundraising objectives, I met with Joe DiVincenzo yesterday, and Jim and I are going to sit down tomorrow to try to craft a resolution that outlines what the town board is prepared to do, and what our responsibilities are, and where there might be some future benchmarks that need to be met in order to proceed forward with that, and if we can get it done in a timely fashion, it might be presented to the board as a walk-on at Tuesday's meeting, but Jim and I have arranged to discuss
Obviously, we can't reserve the land forever, I think a reasonable amount of time, it's ambitious what they want to do, and I certainly understand that they need to know that the land will be there after they raise the money, so it makes sense. So it's, right now, the land isn't being used for any other purpose, it's just a wooded area, a little bit of parking that will be parking, right?
Do we have reservation of a lease agreement? How is it structured?
Be like an understanding of some sort.
Yeah, maybe we can enter into an MOU, perhaps, we'll have to, I'll have to do some research, and I really haven't, we just talked about it today, but
Yeah.
We will
Yeah, and I met, I just met with, I guess, the chairman of that group yesterday, and they were thinking that if we could do this in three-year increments, to see how far they get in a period of time, that they would be comfortable with that, so we wouldn't have to stay in a hold status, for lack of a better term.
It could be a letter of intent even, I, I don't
If that's enough for them, you know, maybe, we'd have to
But I, I wouldn't sign a letter of intent unless it was a board, you know, the board authorized me to sign a letter of intent.
Well, and that would be presented to you in the form of a resolution authorizing any steps that need to be taken.
Right, so you got, let, I'll let the lawyers figure this one out as to what the right mechanism is.
Why they make the big bucks.
And what are they saying they will need in terms of, how much time to raise that type of money?
Well, um, Ms. DiVincenzo said three years.
Three years to raise 25 million?
That's what she's said to me.
That's, okay. Uh, that would be amazing if they did. That's...
I offered her no suggestion. I asked her what her timeline was and she came back with three years, so.
That's, oh, that's just over $8 million a year.
It seems ambitious, but that's what she, uh, was, would be satisfied if, if the initial step could be, uh, over a thr, for a three-year period of time.
Okay, I mean...
It's, uh, that, it, ultimately, it's up to the board. It's your, your property and your prerogative to...
I mean, I, that's, to me, that would be remarkable if they did that. I certainly would be willing to hold it for a slightly longer period of time.
Yeah, and we can build it to the resolution if there's a benchmark that they don't meet somewhere along the time, that we have a, an option to, uh, change the nature of the agreement. I mean, that's not an uncommon thing for us to do.
Is it reasonable beyond that? I don't know, just because, I mean, you're talking about another board potentially. I mean, that's a long time to be holding similar...
All right, but if they raised 15 million in three years, you wouldn't want to take it away and say, oh, no.
But then it's still a good decision, so the board presumably would still support it.
Right, you can, again, it's...
You could put benchmarks.
I'll leave this to the legal department, but we often enter into agreements with an option to renew, uh, if certain conditions are met.
Right.
And, and we can certainly do that here as well.
Okay. All right, now, that sounds good. And, you know, my other concern, should they raise the money, and I think this is a phenomenal thing. I mean, it's, it's amazing that this group is gonna, you know, work to raise that kind of money for the entire community and the recreation's going to be affordable, um, and, you know, it's going to be centrally located. It's a great spot, I believe. I just want to make sure that the plan also is a sustainable plan, uh, that, you know, facilities like this cost a fair amount to operate, you know, to heat the pool, to heat the building, to run the pumps, the staff, that, you know, the membership fees are unlikely to cover that and particularly with the reduced rates that we're asking, you have to keep it affordable. Uh, I want to make sure that they have the ability to continue to fundraise.
That was part of their presentation, that they, they are planning on that. I think 600,000 a year, is what they said.
Yes. Okay. In some ways, this is an arrangement not so dissimilar to SYS. You know, it's, you know, a group raised the money, uh, they built the building, they manage it. Yeah, you do get a little support from the town each year, but it's on our land. It's, we own the building.
And they'll be staffing it. And they will be staffing it.
They will be staffing it, that's correct.
Uh, just like SYS, it's not our employees inside SYS.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it'd be great, it, I, I hope it happens.
Yeah, it, just, uh, added detail Jay reminded me of. I did ask her if they would be prepared to present annually to the board, uh, over that three-year period of time.
I'm sure they said yes.
Any, uh, updates on their progress and, and, and provide any documentation that the town board might require, uh, to substantiate their progress and they were perfectly agreeable to that as well.
You could make that part of the agreement, that they will update us yearly.
Exactly.
On their fundraising.
Mm-hmm.
All right, and, and any board questions on that?
I, I'd asked at the time. I don't know if it was answered on the parking situation, just what would have to happen in terms of currently, um, what we have in terms of parking and what would be additionally needed, because I know there was talk of it being a regional-type facility.
Yeah.
Um, what kind of infrastructure, uh, changes need to be made to accommodate that, if any?
I, I could...
They were going to look into it, but...
Well, like, they did have at the meeting some site plan renderings that...
Like the ones they showed us at work session?
I think it was slightly...
They were more expanded.
The, the ones they showed Tuesday evening were more expanded than the ones that we saw, I don't know, three months ago, four months...
Those two parking areas, one of them actually had a solar, like those solar carports.
Are they going to be making those installations? Is that something that we're expected to do? What was their discussion on that?
It's my understanding that all infrastructure work is, is going to be done by them at their cost, including parking. That's my understanding.
Right, that's, we're gonna have to work that out.
The one thing I think that the plowing afterward, this plowing of the snow on the parking lot will fall to us, possibly, you know, maintaining the streetlights in the parking lot will probably fall to us, like at SYS, but...
But building it, I'm sorry, because SYS had the infrastructure there already.
All, all the construction is on them.
That's my understanding. 100% of the construction work and costs are being borne by STAR and their fundraising.
They knew going in that there would be, other than providing the land, there would be no cost to the town. So, they would be responsible for the entire site, that development, all associated costs. They know that.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm sure that's in their 25 million dollar number.
Yeah.
So, our, our license agreement is essentially a license agreement with them once the facility is up and, or we have...
Well, once it's up, that's probably a change. I think what we're talking about now is just some, some confirmation that the board is committed to try to provide this space for them, should they succeed in reaching the fundraising objectives. That's perhaps an oversimplification, but in a nutshell, that's what we want to do.
A meeting of the minds on the concept.
It, yeah, that's well said, Christine, thank you. Uh, subsequent to that, once it's constructed and, uh, that's, that, the nature of that agreement is going to be substantively different than this initial.
Yeah, because as I, from the last work session, there, they will be, there's a charge for using the facility, obviously. We didn't really talk about shared revenue in that regard. I know with the early plans that I saw, that there were charges to residents using the facility. It wasn't a free facility, you know, free to them.
Right.
Right. Uh, and that, and the other, other question I had that I wanted to bring up was the, we had had some discussions about environmental controls on this, particularly with such a large amount of water and the particular system that's, that they're going to install and how that's going to be managed. I was, I, and I didn't make the meeting. I, I'm sorry, I couldn't make it.
It's okay.
Was that discussed at all?
And not, but they're not...
Not at that level of detail yet.
Yeah, I'm not prepared to answer those questions. You can always invite them to come back at some point in time subsequently.
They kept the presentation, I think, relatively short so that the audience could ask as many questions as possible.
Yeah.
Um, and I think, for, I, for the most part, everybody was positive. I think the two not exactly positive comments were that they wanted it bigger. They just, they felt that it should have been a little bit bigger pool, that kind of thing. So, I don't know that that's critical. They still wanted, those folks, they just would like a, a longer pool. So, I think on the whole, and I know Julie was there, I was there only for a short period. I think Julie stayed throughout and Tommy John was there. Julie, is anything else you wanted to say about that?
No, as you said, the, the support, public support was overwhelmingly, um, in favor, absolutely.
That's great.
All right, so, uh, you guys will work on what that resolution would look like, okay?
Yes.
Thanks, Frank.
All right, and, uh, we had a US Open job fair on Friday. Oh, no, it's coming, it's coming.
Yes.
Uh, there was a different job fair that happened. Friday 11th, 11th, I have a note that there'll be a, uh, job fair on Friday, May 11th from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Town Hall, uh, lower-level conference room, that is for the US Open. And, uh, on May 12th, the next day, the opioid addiction task force will be holding a candlelight vigil at Good Ground Park from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. This is, uh, in honor of the memories of loved ones lost and, uh, if anybody wants to share a story about someone that they, they knew, um, that is certainly welcome, poems, prayers, whatever people want to do to honor those memories. And Connie has been working on this. I know we're going to be, uh, lighting quite a number of candles on the stage there. Connie, is there anything else I should mention about that vigil?
Uh, well, if anybody wants to speak, they can contact me.
Okay, if somebody wants to speak at the vigil, they should contact, uh, they can certainly call my office and we'll connect them up to you, uh, 283-6055. Okay, uh, that should be a nice event, a little different than what we've done before. There really are no, uh, there's no like, uh, program of who's speaking. It's, uh, more if somebody wants to come up and talk. Uh, and I'm not even sure there's a, there's no, I don't know if there's like a, a podium or anything. It's just a stage surrounded by people, so, uh, I guess they could come up onto the stage? Is that what you're thinking?
Or just a microphone that could go move around the audience?
Okay. Uh, we know, uh, Alfredo Morat is going to play some guitar. He's a member of the opioid task force and I think he may be joined by, uh, a violin player. I'm, I'm not sure. And, uh, that's all I have for updates at the moment. Anybody else? John?
I got a couple of things. This Monday, the anti-bias task force, uh, will have its community service award celebration. That's from 6:00 to 8:00 in the auditorium, Monday, May 7th. Uh, it's a really great opportunity, a lot of unsung heroes in our community that do a lot of really good work in the, behind the scenes and they're going to get recognized. Uh, so I would urge you to come and recognize them along with us. It's going to be a really nice, uh, event. Tonight, uh, we have, in West Hampton Beach, our CAC will be meeting with the developers to help us, uh, for its initial meeting for the community center and its development. And we'll also have Christine Dulos with us to talk about the townwide LED, street white, Y, the street light replacement. Uh, we also have, we're, the Tiana Marine Center will be opening pretty soon. Uh, the docks are coming in, I think, today, so the SPAD program will get underway and there's a lot of programming going on down there this, this year, so I urge you all to look at it. We're running out of space for the SPAD program, so I think we have a few lines left, that's it. Uh, so, time is of the essence. I know people have called me to get, get in line to do that, um, and please call me. Uh, I'm not sure how many lines we have left, but we've almost filled up the entire space. So, it looks like it's going to be an exciting, uh, time down there. It's going to be pretty cool, so. That's it, that's what I got right now.
How about you guys? Julie or Christine?
Sure. Um, I attended the official launch of the Surf Riders Strawless Summer Campaign. Um, they gave an intro on what they're doing. They have, I guess, 13 or so restaurants already pledged to go strawless or do, um, strawless, uh, only on demand. Um, they showed a movie called Straws, which was pretty cool. It gave the history of straws and showed the turtle with the straw up its nose that kind of spearheaded this movement. Um, so, if any businesses are interested in joining the Strawless Summer Campaign, they can contract, contact Surf Rider. It's easternli.surfroider.org. Um, if anybody who would like to get out in their community and go to local restaurants to see if they would like to participate, um, they can get information from Surf Rider as well. They have a toolkit for regular people to go to their favorite restaurant and see if they would like to pledge as well. And just remember, um, don't ask for a straw. No straw, please.
Mm-hmm.
Um, also, over the weekend, we, um, had the National Drug Take Back Day. I wanted to thank our police department and the police explorers who helped and we gathered over 88 pounds of medicines that could be, um, flushed or abused, so I thought that was a, it was a very hefty number. So, thanks to our police department.
I was just looking at the numbers. Um, we got the numbers in from the Great East End cleanup and we had more volunteers than we've had in a long time and we collected less garbage than we did, 20.65 tons.
Still a lot of garbage.
It's a lot of garbage, but it's, if you look at it, in 2013, we had 55.5 tons. So, that's a significant decrease.
So, did you have as many people back then?
We, less people collect 55.5 tons than collected 20.65 tons.
No, it wasn't that these people were working less hard, it's that there seems to be less garbage.
Just less garbage.
And I got, I told you, I got a lot of feed, I got feedback that, where they said that they, they saw, it was harder to find and I, and that's a good thing, so.
I think a part of that could be other groups are constantly doing cleanups as well, which is a great thing as well.
Yeah, it could be.
It could be those less people littering too.
I think so, I think we're conscious.
It's one of those self-perpetuating things. I think, you know, when an area's cleaner, you're less likely to dis, to litter.
Yeah, psychologically.
You know?
So, I want to just thank all the volunteers again for always coming out and always supporting us and doing this. Um, we're starting the community garden planting, uh, next weekend. I'll talk about that on Thursday over, um, at the Crow Hand Center, the community garden, so I'm excited about that, um, during the day on the 12th. So, um, that's it for right now.
Let me mention a couple of things I forgot to mention. Yesterday, uh, I was at the Bridgehampton Child Care Center and Altice, um, has donated free Wi-Fi for that facility and they were all really excited about that. So, they'll have, uh, free internet connectivity there and, uh, the kids were all pretty pumped about it.
They made it a hotspot?
Yeah, they made it a hotspot. Um, and, um, I had a meeting with the mayor of North Haven. Jeff Sander is, uh, they're interested in burying the power lines along Long Beach. There's a, a stretch there of power lines that are unsightly and there's a new mechanism that Assemblyman Thiel was able to get through, um, at the state level that allows, uh, a taxable district to, uh, to do an underground utility project. So, he, it's still at the early stages, but they've been compiling the numbers and trying to figure out, um, you know, what the cost would be, so you'll hear more about that.
Is that stretch within the town or within the village?
It's all within the town. Um, it goes really, literally up to the North Haven Village border. Um, but the size of the area, it's basically all along the public beach there, uh, Long Beach. Um, you know, initially, well, I, I want, it's nominal because of the district that they're proposing. It's a very small cost.
The village is proposing though, that the...
The village would, it's part of, would be within, the village of North Haven would help pay for it. The village of Sag Harbor would help pay for it.
They're asking for it, so I would hope so.
Yes. So, uh, but it, it seems, it seems like it's moving in a positive direction. It'd ultimately be up to the public to decide whether it's a, a pro, if they get enough benefit for it to, to make it worthwhile. And then, as you know, we, uh, we were conducting and in a review of procedures, um, within the Hampton Bay's Water District. That is, uh, complete as I understand it, so I'll be, I'm anticipating the report tomorrow or Monday at the latest, so, uh, I'll distribute it to you guys. Um, and that's it. So, we have about 20 minutes. Uh, do you want to take a 20-minute break? Then we'll come back, we'll get a quick bite and we'll, uh, come back at noon for the US Open discussion. All right, I'll make a motion to recess.
Second.
Second, all favor?
Hi.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call our May 3rd work session back to order. Um, our next item is a presentation of preparations for the 2018 US Open Golf Tournament at Shinnecock Hills. We're joined by a, a number of individuals. Captain Shurk, who is the incident commander. We don't, that's not public?
It's easy.
Uh, I was going to say, now, I'm going to have to start over.
You just started an incident there, Jay.
Did I give away confidential information? I think, I think it's widely known. Thank you, Captain. Cheryl Craft from Fire Marshal's Office, uh, Timothy, what's your last, I'm sorry?
Lloyd.
Lloyd, and your position?
I'm Senior Manager of Operations.
And Charlie Howe?
Charlie Howe, 2018 US Open Championship Director.
Tom Neely, Intermodal Transit...
We'll go with the transportation and traffic safety.
Traffic Safety Director.
Today's guy.
Lieutenant Mike Zaro. And Hank?
Hank Thompson, Director of US Open.
And...
Walter Dunn, Dunn Engineering.
Walter Dunn. Good to see you. You look different, mostly.
I'm getting regularly.
Yeah.
As he's sitting here.
Suddenly you just don't recognize yourself.
Okay, so I know one of the things we're concerned about is traffic circulation, but I, if you want to do a general overview, who's leading on?
We do an overview, maybe Charlie will start with that, so we'll do kind of an overview and then get to some of the particulars and especially talk about the transportation and traffic and parking.
Okay.
Stephen Troy is here as well.
Public Safety Administrator. Okay.
Well, thanks for the time today. It's always good to have this group together, certainly on this side of the table, that's where we get most of the work done when it comes to traffic or security and certain of the public safety overall, but couldn't be more excited to have the US Open coming here. We kind of really kick off in earnest, June 7 through the 10th. We have our merchandise pavilion that's open to the public, no tickets required, but on those days, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, we'll have our folks and people that wanted to come kind of get a glimpse of the US Open without having a ticket per se, have the opportunity to come in our merchandise pavilion and see Fan Central at the US Open. We'll utilize parking at Stony Brook Southampton campus for that event, and we'll have the pedestrian bridge and platform in place by that for the June 7 start date, really for us. But the championship proper, we look at as June 11 through the 17th, a seven-day event. We've got 156 players ultimately competing for our national championship. Entries have closed. We received about over 9,000 entries of people that want to participate and try to compete in our national championship. That's what's unique about our event compared to a lot of PGA Tour events you might see on television or some of the other major championships where the US Open is, like its name, it's open to anyone with a handicap index of 1.4 or less. I don't think you have to be concerned about anyone on this side of the table trying to qualify. Hank may be closest, but...
How many players actually get to play?
156 players will compete, and Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday are practice rounds for those players.
Did Tiger Woods make the list?
He's made the list, he's submitted an entry. He was exempt, we have about 16 different exemptions, and probably need to go through all of them, but if you win the US Open, you have a 10-year exemption into competing in the next 10 years.
So he will be playing?
So he will be playing, and he's healthy.
Is that breaking news? Is that...
We broke that news about two weeks ago, that he filed his entry, which is what he needed to do by April 25th. Again, being that he's exempt, he doesn't have to go through US Open qualifying, so as long as he's healthy from here to now, he'll be playing in the US Open, and we can't wait to certainly have him back. And I believe in 2004, he played in it but had to withdraw to an injury. So this will be, a lot has happened in his career since then, a lot more major championships, but his last one was 2008, which qualified him in the 2018 US Open. The rest of the players, about half of those 156 players, I should say, meet those different exemptions that I mentioned. If you win the Masters, the PGA Championship, the Open Championship over across the pond, you get a five-year exemption in the US Open. If you win the Players, which is next week, you know, you get a three-year exemption, and then really here in a couple of weeks, we'll take the top 60 OWGR, which is the Official World Golf Ranking, those players will become exempt. And then ultimately, we'll have, you know, anywhere between 70, maybe 80 on a high-end year that we know those players are going to be competing, you know, in a few weeks from now. But the rest are going through local qualifying. We actually have, which is exciting for part of this community, is May 7 at Southampton Golf Club. One of the qualifiers is at Southampton Golf Club. So potentially, someone who comes out of there will ultimately go to sectional qualifying, which is June 4, the Monday before, and they're spread throughout the country, and then from there, they're competing against those PGA Tour players that didn't meet one of those exemptions, so it's kind of exciting. We call it the longest day in golf that'll be televised with Golf Channel, a lot of coverage for the US Open. But really, after the end-of-day Monday, depending whether across the country participates and everyone finishes on time, end-of-day Monday, we'll be able to know our field and announce our 156 players, you know, to the public and to our fans.
Have you been working on prepping for this, about two years now?
That's correct. So me personally and Tim Lloyd over my right shoulder, we moved here in September of 2016 just to really work on the preparations and more of the logistics. The golf course is, the superintendent, John Jennings, and the club itself has, you know, spent multiple years getting ready. They're the ones that, how high the grass is going to be, working with our kind of setup team. But outside the ropes, we like to say, how to get people here, the transportation logistics, the site build, the tents itself kind of exist in our world, and Hank Thompson also here, who was in my role for the 2011 and 2013 US Opens. Now we report to him, he works out of Pinehurst, but has made much more frequent visits to Southampton as the calendar hit 2018, but collectively, you know, our team really works on the even year US Opens. And after a successful championship here, we'll spend really the majority of the summer making sure that all the loose ends we have with the club or the community and just kind of getting everything back together and we leave it better than we found it, we hope, we'll move to the 2020 US Open site at Wingfoot, Immerenack, New York, and kind of a little bit of Groundhog Day.
You're going to have to be back in 2026?
And 2026, back on the calendar at Shinnecock Hills. So it's a place that we collectively, our organization, it's steeped in history with Shinnecock. They are a founding member of the USGA, along with Newport Country Club, Brookline, the Country Club in Boston, St. Andrews and Yonkers, New York, Chicago Golf Club as well, making up as four with Shinnecock, or five total, but a lot of history. We had our second-ever US Open played here at Shinnecock Hills Golf Club, and now we're holding our 118th in June. So we've grown a lot, but the club, in essence, in many cases, has stayed the same with the same clubhouse, and it's just, we're excited to take the US Open to just this iconic venue, this, you know, iconic, you know, the Hamptons, this community, the town of Southampton, because, you know, haven't been here since 2004. The players have changed a little bit. There's Phil Mickelson, who finished second in '04 and has finished six times, he's been finished second in the US Open, he's never won a US Open. I think we're excited about what the storylines might be for our fans and whatever transpires during the week. But yeah, really moving here in September 2016 was probably not much, or soon after that was being introduced to the people at this table here in the community, like...
I know you've been busy those two years. Hope you got to enjoy the community a little.
I have, I have. I called West Hampton home.
Hopefully we greeted you warmly.
Absolutely.
A good experience here in Southampton.
It's been great, and I think one thing that we've benefited from is, you know, a lot of times in our setup, we'll have our office trailer within the grounds of a private club or a public, you know, club, wherever we are. This year, and really in 2016, we opened an office, you know, in the Village on Main Street. And that's really helped us just, I think, be more open to the community, where we have 4,500 volunteers that make up our kind of volunteer committees, or over 20 different committees. But in the past, some people may be a little nervous about maybe going into a private venue where we've been more front and center, which has been great, just to be there for this long, and people stop in on a daily basis, so it's great.
It's nice to hear that you live in West Hampton, as I do, so you can see the traffic perspective from that side.
We do see the challenges of the traffic, and to touch on that in the segue, you know, for the US Open, over the course of the seven days, being a seven-day event, we'll see over 200,000 people, and we'll have tickets being scanned. But breaking up that seven days, we sell 30,000 tickets per day to the championship. So there's 30,000 available on Monday, and there's 30,000, again, paid ticket holders available on Sunday. That number has actually decreased from 2004. 2004, we sold 37,500 per day. I think it's a collective decision on us. About eight years ago, we started really surveying our fans on site with some touchscreens and just asking for feedback. You know, is it too crowded? How was your transportation trip? How long did it take? Just those pieces of information that we can take and take best practices into, not only next year, but if we come back to a site that we've been to before, we've got some real data that we can. And overwhelmingly, we just had seen over the past eight years that the course was too crowded and it was really inhibiting that fan experience. So we took a long, hard look at it across all of our championships, not just the difference from here. I would say one of our largest venues that we can host the championship is Pinehurst, North Carolina. In 2005, we had much more people at the 2005 US Open than we did the 2014 US Open at Pinehurst. And for that purpose, was just, we want to make sure we're doing best by our fans, improving that experience, but thinking that also helps, you know, certainly with the number of people that we're bringing in that would potentially inhibit the traffic and overall plan. But that's something we look very seriously into every site we go. If you ask, if anyone asks me any year what our largest challenges are, typically that's the first on the list, is just the parking and transportation plan. Just because we understand we're introducing a number of people to the area, in this case, you know, sometimes, and a lot of major cities are already stressed area with traffic. So that's really where we developed a remote parking system. That's our philosophy, to where we don't want to introduce 6,000 cars, and that's the potential that we have, you know, really to park at Gabreski Airport. We don't want to introduce 6,000 cars into the immediate area, or else the rest of the transportation really would shut down. So that's what we do every single US Open, is have about a 25, 30-minute trip for our fans in that general parking area. So that will help. Again, we take 6,000 cars and have them at Gabreski, and then overall, in our peak, we won't always have 90 buses running, but that's the peak number during the day that we'll have from Gabreski Airport coming to the golf course and dropping off through the temporary bus loop that we worked with, not only Alex Gregor with some curb cuts to allow us, but also with the host club, Shinnecock Hills Golf Club, because it's a roadway, it's a par-three course, and our Fan Central's on, that they will not want us to keep that road. So that's, everything that we do really is temporary in nature, return that to, you know, as soon as we can for them and getting all of our equipment off. But, you know, with Lieutenant Zaro here, who's really been our branch manager and under Captain Shurk's with our traffic operations and certainly working with Tom Neely, to think about collectively how best to have the US Open traffic work along with the day-to-day traffic that we work. And, you know, there's a lot of other partners in it. We have the town, but there's also agencies with Suffolk County, the Suffolk County Sheriff's Department, New York State Police. From a public safety, you can even look into some federal agencies that we look and have help with some of the security. For example, yesterday, I met with the Department of Homeland Security, one of their advisors that does a threat assessment on the whole site, so looking at our perimeter, our mission gates, our fencing, really the assets that are very important and critical to the success of the championship. And so we spent a good time there, and he thinks we're in a good area, and is happy to hear the folks in this room that we're working with, and to see he has some familiarity, you know, with the 2004 US Open and certainly 2009 at Bethpage, you know, at Pilot. But I could probably keep going on and on and on. I think maybe some questions could help drive some of the answers that I could come up with next.
My first question is, how are you managing traffic? So where the buses are going to be, on what side of 39? I know there's a bridge going over there. Sort of give us a base description and...
Yeah, Walter, if you want to just walk through the, kind of, went up, fan parks at Gabreski and works with our team to park that car, what's the process from them getting to the US Open?
Okay, essentially, when they pull into Gabreski Airport, they'll be directed through the airport to the parking site, which is the northward part of the site, and there's a security check-in at that point, too, and then they'll board, after that, they board the buses, Academy Bus, I believe is the one supplying the shuttle buses, and then they'll proceed north on Canalway 31, up to Sunrise Highway, make a right going eastbound on Sunrise Highway, proceed all the way onto Canalway 39, and then they will eventually merge into the left turn lane at Shrubland Road to lead onto Sabonic Road, they'll go all around Sabonic Road. In the past, they used to stop, they used to have to drop off in the back. Now we're going to continue over to Sandy Hollow Road, and they'll come southbound on Sandy Hollow Road, make a right turn back onto Canalway 39 going westbound, and they'll pull in onto St. Andrews Road, where it meets Canalway 39, and there'll be a bus loop that's formed, so they'll turn right into the bus loop, which will be kind of parallel to Canalway 39 on the north side. And then there'll be at least six locations where they can load simultaneously, and then they'll come out onto the northerly westbound lane and merge into traffic. There'll be a police officer assigned there to help them merge in, so they don't have to stop there with the traffic, but to try to keep the traffic flowing through that point. The westbound lane will still be operating as a through lane to the southerly westbound lane, and they'll continue back to Gabreski Airport.
Can I just, because part of the purpose of today, too, is to allow the public and give them as much advanced notice as possible in terms of potential detours, closings, from the point of when it's going to start, in addition to the actual opening date and where the fans are going to get and how they're going to get to the venue, but also allowing our residents to know which roads are going to be closed, when they're going to be closed, what the detours are going to be, when that's going to start, when it'll stop for some areas, and we could just outline that, just to, because we want to get as much notice as possible so that people anticipate where they're going to have to change their routes to work, how they're going to maneuver, and just...
And I think that applies to school buses, too.
Right.
Actually, we can, you know, we can jump right to that. I think, you know, Walter gave a nice overview of how most of the people are going to access the course. There also will be train service, just to mention that, and a pedestrian bridge over, you know, so people will get off at the college.
And there'll be checkpoints at that point, too.
Checkpoints, security checkpoints, and get them up and over on the bridge. There'll also be bus service from the east bringing people in, so that, again, there's less vehicular car demand in the area. As far as the restrictions go, I'd like to share with you, we have been working, again, with everybody at this table, as well as with Suffolk County, DPW, their Traffic Safety Division, has also, you know, been very involved in this. I'll just, if you don't mind, I will hand out, these are three documents for you to take a look at. The first one are the, the first one is the parking, stopping, no standing restrictions that we would like to put into effect. The second document are what we call the vehicular movement restrictions, the turning movements, the things like that. And then the third document is a draft Town Board resolution that we would like to walk on for Tuesday and have you adopt these.
And once we do that, this will be something that we'll have up on our website so that people can refer to it, so they know.
Yeah, and we are modeling a lot of what we're doing after what was done in 2004. The board worked in a similar process. These documents we're going to look at right now were, at that time, put into a memo from the chief to the Town Board, and we will plan to do that also, so that you have that in a formal memo from the chief to the Town Board. But I can walk you through kind of a quick overview of everything you're looking at here.
Where's the resolution, Tom?
The last one? You don't have a third? Oh, no, I'm sorry. I didn't paperclip those. Here's the resolution. Sorry.
I had actually some questions on Walter's presentation about the bus route.
Okay, do you, whichever way you want to go.
Do you want to do this first, and then we'll go back to what Walter was talking about?
If we could, I think.
Whichever, yeah, certainly, and when I think a little more about the train maybe, too, transportation. Okay, just looking at these, and we've organized them kind of by sector, by geography. So we have restrictions north of 39, north, restriction south of 39, the parking, the vehicle movements are also organized the same way.
And you did them by date?
And by the streets involved. I can just kind of tell you in an overview, the no parking, no standing, no stopping regulations are, in most cases, between the 11th and the 19th, which are the tournament dates now. The 19th is a Tuesday, so that Monday after the tournament hopefully ends, we will have that included in here, because if there's a rain day, then they have to play Monday.
Okay.
We have to have that in there. But again, in discussing this, what we plan to do, if it ends on Sunday night, as I think everybody hopes it does, we go out Monday morning and take all of these post-restrictions down. So they say the 19th, but hoping that everything goes away on the 18th. So County Road 39 and County Road and State Route 27A, both are, will have no stopping, no standing, no parking. County Road 39 is currently already marked that way, signed that way, we're just reinforcing it by putting it in here. North of County Road 39, it's essentially from Shrubland Road, I'm having trouble looking upside, basically from Shrubland Road over to McGee Street, and then north up to David White's Lane, those streets, so it's kind of a section right in here, those streets will have the no parking, no stopping, no standing.
Up to White's Lane?
Yeah, White's Lane.
Not David White's?
I'm sorry, did I say David White's? Yeah, I'm sorry. White's Lane.
I'm sorry, another one?
I'm sorry. So it's basically this corridor in here to the north. Going to the south, it basically goes down Takahoe Lane and North Bishop's down to Montauk Highway, then in the, and all the way back, so basically this whole corridor between Hill Station East to McGee Street and the Takahoe Lane area, both immediately north and immediately south are no parking, no stopping, no standing.
So that's both all that area between the 11th and the 19th?
Right, right.
No parking, no standing?
Right. Just south of Montauk Highway 27A, this area down here, Little Neck and old Landing Lane and a few others, over to Hill Station, which is the south of the highway there is Adderbury. This whole area is also going to be marked as no parking, no stopping, no standing. And so that's kind of overall the...
That's 24 hours a day?
Yes. Yes.
So no parking along the street at night?
Right. Well, you're not, I mean, 1 to 5 a.m., you're not allowed to park in residential areas anyway, so...
What about standing for businesses?
The private businesses, they're, you know, these are residential areas. The restrictions don't apply to any of the businesses along 39. There's nothing, you know, that impacts those driveways.
These are the side streets.
These are the side streets, the residential streets. And also, I should, it's off the map, but no parking, no stopping, no standing on County Road 31 in West Hampton and on Stewart Avenue in West Hampton, right by, you know, the airport.
Now, are these no standing restrictions, no parking restrictions, were they in place the last US Open as well?
Yes, yes. And in fact, last time, we did this in 2004, there were, I counted up, 47 different parking restrictions and vehicle movement restrictions, which we're going to talk about. We've reduced that down to 30. So I think we've actually, you know, maybe it was a little over cautious in 2004 or whatever, and situations have changed. We have a center turn lane now on 39 that we did not have then, so, you know, there have been some changes in the situation that we felt like we could... that we felt like we could reduce some of the, some of the regulations. We'll also, and it's in your resolution, again, modeled on 2004, the board approved what was presented to them at the time it was adopted. But with the understanding, the caveat in the resolution that at the town police's discretion, they can make changes in those regulations between the time you approve it and the time the, you know, open is in operation. So if we find something that's not working or we don't need, under their authority, they could, you know, make the change. As far as the vehicle movement changes, along County Road 39, from Inlet Road East, out here somewhere, through Takahoe Lane, there'll be right turns only from 6:00 to 10:00 a.m. That was 6:00 a.m. to noon in the past. So we've actually made it 6:00 to 10:00 a.m. again. And everybody working together, we kind of felt like the, you know, busy time with the buses and the, you know, people around the open is the 6:00 to 10:00 a.m. is really kind of that morning time. So we've reduced it from a restriction until noon to only 10:00 a.m. Eastbound left turns into Shrubland, as Walter mentioned, we currently have a no...
I'm sorry, Tom, so I'm just, I understand this on the school buses. Is this during the exam period? Are we going to, do they have a regular schedule? Or is this going to be a little bit different from the schools' perspective?
School buses, we've put a, an exemption for school buses in all these vehicle turning movements. And they're actually exempt from the current, you know, current ones. I've looked at the school bus schedules. There's only one or two where there's a potential conflict that I saw. Even if you exempt them, you still don't want, you know, a conflict situation, if you're going to avoid it. So I don't think we're going to have a real problem with that. But we did exempt them so that, and obviously, the officers in the field that are enforcing these regulations are going to, you know, be aware of whatever we, you know, have written up here, so.
Thank you.
So along 39, it'd be right turns only. A couple of them, Shrubland and St. Andrews West, go basically until the evening, because that is really where the buses going in and the buses coming out are kind of both along that stretch. So we felt like we needed to keep that right turn restriction in later into the day. So it's just really those two streets, otherwise it's the 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. And as I said, the eastbound left turns into Shrubland, there will be a temporary traffic signal at Shrubland, which maybe you want to talk about in a minute after I run through these.
That was one of my questions.
So St. Andrews and Shrubland are the 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. right turn only?
Right, right. And again, we feel like there's kind of a confluence, a lot going on there.
That's right.
That light is only in the west, the light's only in the westbound lane?
Do you want to speak to the traffic signal, Walter?
Essentially, it's a temporary traffic signal installed similar to 2004. And it'll be operated at manual control, so they can change the signal to accommodate the buses and people making the eastbound to northbound left turn lane and lane into Shrubland. And essentially, the focus is to stop the westbound traffic flow to accommodate them causing, so it doesn't have to stop the eastbound traffic flow. So that's correct.
So just the two westbound lanes will stop?
Correct.
And there's a, there's a left turning lane there?
There is. And then beyond that, it's a center two-way left turn lane. So it leads from the center two-way left turn lane into the left turn lane itself.
Okay. The, then jumping down to Montauk, and there's a couple of roads closed, but we'll get to that in a minute. Jumping down to Montauk Highway, there are no time restrictions either onto or off of Montauk Highway. Again, that's different. There were restrictions in 2004. We feel we don't need those any longer, so we've lifted those. I should also point out, going back to 39, lefts into businesses or streets are still permitted. Again, we didn't have a center turn lane back then, we do now. So we're, you can turn in, and you can turn, there's no restrictions on private driveways. So the businesses and whatever are not impacted. We've just restricted the lefts out of the streets, so. So now, maybe we get to the, some of the closures here. Takahoe Road North, the northern part of, right, through here, will be closed from May 29th to June 22nd. The southern part, from, you know, the tracks and 39, south down to Montauk Highway would be closed from June 7th to June 19th.
That allows local traffic going into Parish Pond?
Thank you, yeah. All of these closures exempt, you know, local residents, right? If you live in the neighborhood.
Not all of them, but the southern ones.
Well, I'm sorry, not the, right. The southern ones and the ones...
The ones between Sabonic and really the golf course at the very end. But the few residents just past there.
Does this show their IDs, they approach the checkpoint, or they have a sticker that they can use for that time?
They can't get past Parish Pond anyway, there's a closure there. So they'd have to turn into Parish Pond at that point. They just show their ID. I don't know if they're going to get a look.
Yeah, we're working on a letter going on, seeing if they can happen in advance.
So if they don't have that, what happens? You have to turn them around?
Then it's the officer there that, you know, either lets them through or doesn't let them.
Okay, in the interest of keeping things moving, yeah, all right.
So we, we're not going to cut people off from access to their residences. So the southern area, just to finish up on that, St. Andrews would be closed up as far as Nicholas Court, except for residents, so that again, they can get into the subdivisions there. Would be, I guess, a hard closure from the railroad tracks north, because we don't want, this is where the buses are going to be pulling in and unloading in this area. So there's, you know, access to 39 from the railroad tracks. That little loop is no access. But all residents of this area can have access from Montauk Highway.
And we have, just for clarity, too, we have rented the Montessori school, so from a no access, that's, you have access for some of our public safety.
And there are three churches around there, too, right? Did you talk to them?
Yeah, the Greek church has rented to an outside hospitality group that we've been in touch with the outside hospitality group on, trying to understand their logistics companies to make sure it works within our plans.
One of our concerns, and they jump in, with that northern section of St. Andrews is obviously the low overhang with the overpass of 39 and the railroad. But even more importantly, there are no cross, there are no pedestrian walkways under there. And quite frankly, we're not set up to receive pedestrians into that area of the championship from a security perspective.
Right, right.
So from a safety, pedestrian safety perspective, but also from a public safety perspective of the championship, it's in my opinion, the best interest to prevent any vehicles that aren't appropriately authorized or pedestrians.
And to expand on that good thought about the pedestrians, what we've talked about doing is down at St. Andrews, where you might have pedestrians or bicyclists possibly wanting to walk up to the course, put some signage up there, directing them over to Takahoe Road, maybe put another sign right up here, directing pedestrians, bicyclists over to Takahoe Road, because per se...
Force them onto the bridge?
Force them, yeah, make them go through over the bridge. And there's also going to be some bicycle racks, so.
We'll have bicycle racks down in the southwest portion of the campus at our passenger drop-off area. And we communicate that, and our fan guide, which Charlie, I think, brought along with him, where they can go with bicycles, whether it's Gabreski Airport, if they're at West Hampton, they can ride over, secure it, and then get on our buses or go there.
The buses that, I was going to ask this before. So the buses that are going onto St. Andrews, are they dropping off on the north side of Sunrise? Or are they going around and going all the way up to the college, you know, down to St. Andrews and up Takahoe? Where do the buses actually let the passengers off?
From Gabreski, they're going to, obviously, once they make to Sandy Hollow and get headed westbound on County Road 39, they're going to take that right turn into St. Andrews. And it's almost an immediate left turn.
Oh, they're temporarily...
Turn a right there.
So they will drop off right on the property? The bus riders won't have to go over the pedestrian bridge?
That's accurate.
This is an example of the two bus loops. But is there other private or public transportation where at Southampton, Southampton Campus is being parked there for pedestrians to then walk across pedestrian bridges?
I'll back up. At Stony Brook Southampton, the campus, we've worked with them. Hank and I just left a meeting with Matt Luanne and their team on the overall parking operation. But we do have some VIP, what we call parking lots, for some of our corporate partners and corporate clients that will have the proper hang tags. Again, they'll have to have those hang tags to turn off of Montauk Highway to access Takahoe Road, as would, like we just mentioned, the residents that would maybe get on Parish Pond. So we will have parking and in cars parked by our parking attendants. As Hank also mentioned, if you were westbound on Montauk, passing Takahoe Road, we have worked with the campus to really introduce a passenger drop-off. And it's very similar to 2004. This passenger drop-off is for that family, friends, taxi, Uber, Lyft, ride-share. Also, where bicycle park, or bicycle racks would be for, you know, our fans to secure their bikes there. We do limit that size vehicle to a 12 passengers or less. But then they will exit, back out on the Montauk, taking a right. But that will be the drop-off.
All of those people who need to go over the road.
But exactly right. All of this campus will have an admission gate, we'll call it Gate 2, that will handle the campus, passenger drop-offs, VIP lots. In addition to our fans that utilize the Long Island Railroad and our temporary train station, they will also utilize that bridge. So what we'll communicate to the residents, really part of the St. Andrews neighborhood and Parish Pond, not only with this resident pass that we're prepared to put in their hands, that would give them access off of Montauk on St. Andrews or on Takahoe Road, but that if they are planning to attend the championship and it is not, we kind of language to say, it is not this way, please utilize Parish Pond to get to the campus, to go through our gates, too.
Have they added more trains or special trains for this?
We're working with them still. We kind of have the starting point of a good schedule that they had from 2004. You know, we are still limited from a single track, but have looked to supplement some trains. And we are, I think, like everyone, itching to get that final schedule that they'll share with not only our fans, but they had to get their summer schedule also at the same time. We expect that.
Because that may affect the trains going westbound.
Yeah, and that's exactly right. They were, it's a really fine balance for the Long Island Railroad from, again, if it's a later train accommodating maybe 200 of our fans, but maybe inconvenient, you see, you know, there's a number that triggered that, they wouldn't add the train. But if it was, so we're working with them collectively on a good schedule that provides it, and really will be the most convenient way to come to the US Open.
I imagine they'll have to put that out soon.
We had just had a release that should be going out, but just to remind people that this is coming. We hope to have the scheduling, so it's almost, introduce them that a schedule is...
Is the station built for it, platform?
I'm glad you asked. The platform, the bridge, the station, really the construction out there, we're looking at and have planned for the week of May 14th. So really, Monday and Tuesday, the 14th and 15th, we're going to spend some time on the platform itself, some of the towers to the bridge. But then we'll, as part of some of the closure here, is we're looking to close the County Road 39 from 9:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. the night of the 16th into the morning of May 17th.
Is that on there?
So where does the train stop?
Not on there.
It's not on there.
Eastside, okay. So, because we have a problem with a lot of our train stops where the train, in a certain way...
That's an important date, time that needs to go.
And that's, we're definitely, starting roughly 150 feet east of Takahoe Road and running east.
Yeah, no, I know, but it's out of the envelope.
9:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. But collectively, this team has looked in at it with Walter's help with the detour plan and to propose to, obviously, this group here.
We can certainly put it on our list as an FYI. We were going to put it on the website.
Scheduling would be great.
Walter does have the plan.
9:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m.?
That's where Walter was...
It's just about notifications, not whether it's...
Right, right.
And that's what Walter was instrumental, being able to get the traffic counts and really, so we could kind of thread the needle, when that, the best time to... It's also the day of the week. We wanted to make it earlier in the week and not...
Would that be both sides, eastbound and westbound?
It would be.
And they'll have multiple, with signage, they'll have multiple options, both east and west, of where they want to get off and go around. But we'll certainly get that on here and on the website.
What were the dates again? May 19th?
The overnight closure would be the 16th into this morning of the 17th, 9:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m.
Yeah, Tom, if you could forward that, any kind of fact sheet for us to deal with consignments and calls, that would be useful, thanks.
So while the platform, while the bridge will be constructed, you know, after that week, it will not be operational until June 7th. So we are working with Long Island Railroad, June 7th through the 10th, those four days prior to the championship proper, to have one or two trains stop as also an option for our fans to come to the merchandise facility.
So that, and just to wrap up on the road closures we didn't touch upon, so I just want to touch upon, the subdivision kind of northeast of the golf course, Knollwood, Country Club Drive, Terrace, these will be handled in the same way. It'll be a closure except for residents of that subdivision. So that, again, that's in our...
Exactly. With Lieutenant Zar, we'll have a post here at the Sabonic Takahoe Road here, as well as at Knollwood. So to access the homes in here, same process where a resident pass would be required or that's soft handling with that police officer.
And just to wrap up that part of it, as we said, school buses, we'll note that those are exempt from any of these restrictions. You know, even the closures, of course, they got to bring the kids home, they can do it.
You mean, school buses from school districts?
From school districts. No freelancing, no freelancing. The, you know, the highway superintendent and his foreman met with us yesterday to go over these roadway changes. He's agreed he's going to make up about 15 or so of the signs, the right turn only signs and some of those other signs that we need. They'll make them up, install them. I'm going to go out with their foreman next week and just, we're going to mark, literally, on each part of the road, the sign's going to go here. And the USGA is working with, you know, us and the police department on the no parking, no standing, no stopping signs. Those obviously are a little more temporary in nature. In the past, they've been done with kind of plastic signs with wooden stakes as opposed to a full, you know, metal in-the-ground fixture. So we're going to, you know, work with these folks and get, you know, get those done as well.
Just as far as the closings go and the detours and stuff, just because you've laid it out very nicely and it all makes sense. But in terms of looking at it as a whole as a resident, it's kind of overwhelming, just because there's a lot of them. Will we be using the system that we have on the notification system through the alert so that people know, like, two days before, remember, on Wednesday, we're going to be closing? So as each day approaches, they don't have to memorize the story?
Yeah, and we'll look to, with some variable message signs, to be able to communicate that days in advance about those changes.
That's a good idea. Like with the overnight closure, right, yeah.
Definitely, we'll have all that stuff like two days in advance, so people can start planning.
Yeah, good, good idea.
I'd just like to add one point with that. But, you know, we're working on, with the police and the county to look at the closure plans, the direction of the pedestrian overpasses. And we've developed a number of different alternate routes. And the concept was, we didn't, we wanted to distribute it so all the burden didn't go on one road. For instance, if we use Shrubland-Sabonic Road, you'd have trucks going up there and everything. And so we've looked to divert it as far back as Exit 65 into Hampton Bay, Exit 66 down to Montauk Highway in Shinnacock Hills.
Then those detours, when you announce this is going to be closed from this to this, you should have a list of alternate routes on our, and Frank, you do a lot with the system, the alert system, so we know it's going out. This should have that.
I can throw it over and let you...
I think Charlie has one more to go next.
I'm not asking you to, I'm not...
We're not going to let them, thank you.
It's more information if you want to...
Why don't you jump in there?
Three minutes. Appreciate it. You're going to be happy to see it.
Essentially, what we did is, this is a working partnership, you know, we talked at the meeting, something changed a little bit. But essentially, we started out with, I guess, three or four eastbound detour routes. And then we necked it down now to three. And as we said, essentially, the first one is trying to get down onto Montauk Highway from Exit 65 in Hampton Bays. So they would proceed south on 24, make a left and go through Montauk Highway. And we lead them all the way to the Village of Southampton. So that would be putting it on the state-county road numbers until it gets into the village roads. And as part of that, the second one was to say, okay, let's do the same thing at Exit 66, 66, have them coming eastbound on 27, and then come down to Montauk Highway, make a left, and proceed all the way through to that same route into the Village of Southampton," which would end up coming up North Sea Road and then making a right turn back onto Canal Route 39.
Now, there's no signal at the North Sea intersection, would there be a police officer there?
At North Road? That's correct, there isn't. So, there would be a police officer that would be assigned to that. And then the third one was, and primarily, what we're trying to do is, you know, distribute it so it doesn't have a major effect on one roadway. The second one, the third route, would be, and so the first two were really aimed at making sure the trucks get off at those locations. And the third route would be to come up to a Shrubland Road, make the left and go to Sabonic Road. And I guess we're still looking to see where it comes back into Canal Route 39.
What's the height restriction for the pedestrian bridge on 39?
If it needs all necessary.
It does.
It's going to be 17 feet.
So, we don't need to have anybody get lost over there? Okay, great.
And so, those would be the three westbound routes, the, uh, eastbound routes. The two westbound routes is to get them off County Route 39, make a left at North Sea Road, go down to Windmill Lane, and then make a right onto Hill Street, and come all the way through Hill Street on Montauk Highway as far west as Hampton Bays again to get on 24. And then the other alternate route was to get onto Sabonic Road, either McGee Street or Tuckahoe Lane, and have them come all the way and bypass the whole detour that way. Now, what's unique about this is that we're trying to work with the state to commit to the signing and then for the county. And as part of this, we have a plan here that's showing where we're locating if the state supplies through the inform system, the portable changeable message signs put in to be used in advance of the detour and on the day of the detour.
Yeah.
So, we have this, and we're finalizing that. I think we're looking to see if we're going to add one or two more locations and try to get that into the state within the next day. So, it's still a work of progress, but we think we're covering most of the points.
And that'll include the May start date for the pedestrian?
Yes, that is really for the closure, just for the pedestrian overpass.
Obviously, one of the bridges is-
Right, then the other thing again, right.
We're finding that one, getting the closure of Tuckahoe Road on 29.
Well, you can keep that bridge up.
Then you'll get that stuff.
Yes.
You'll get the advance notice up for the other closings as they roll.
And then, on the other side of the championship, we haven't determined what day to bring the same bridge down.
Right, exactly, yeah.
So, what process will take place.
Walter, I wanted to ask this earlier when you were talking about the bus routing, and I'll take the opportunity now. You know, we've seen quite a bit of traffic already on County Route 39 with the run-up, you know, to Memorial Day. And I'm concerned about those buses getting caught in that traffic. So, are we doing a bus lane? You hadn't mentioned that.
No. We looked at the possibility of putting a bus lane. We met with the New York State DOT, and they were not excited about it. They wanted to see if we were running traffic on the shoulder. They wanted us to take core samples. And it just appeared that we weren't getting the bang for the buck to do what they're doing. Plus, the problem was, you know, the county widened County Route 39 to the five-lane section through most parts, but then it drops closer to the golf course, it becomes back to two lanes in each direction because it's not the center turn lane continuing all the way through. Because there weren't many businesses there, and I guess it was cost that was involved. So, when we, the county asked us to go back and talk to the state about the bus lane. And when they built Canal Route 39 to do that winding, they actually narrowed the necking down.
Yeah, the lanes are narrowed.
So, we, yeah, but not only the lanes, but where the transition is with Route 27 eastbound into Canal Route 39, you know, before we could pull over and have three lanes of traffic leading into it. So, and we had the choice in those days of just taking a two- or three-lane roadway and making the full use of a 66-foot wide right-of-way to run as many lanes as we possibly could put in, and then we used reversible lanes. Now, we don't have that same privilege. So, yes, we've been concerned about the numbers, but we think we've come up with a plan with the police and the county that will work, right? So, that's the best way to say it now. We never know what's going to happen when you look at the-
So, you do have a plan in place to get those buses through the traffic if you have to? Like a police escort type of plan?
You know, I guess the first point is, I'm not sure we can do that at all, right? I mean, we looked even to see if we could put a contra-flow lane in.
A what?
A contra-flow lane. In other words, if we took one of the westbound lanes off of Route 27 and had the buses cross over the median and run that lane contra-flow to the traffic, how would that work? We kind of got knocked down with that because of the desire of the county to maintain the two-way center turn lane to allow access to the businesses and residents. So, that kind of put, you know, the best-laid plan of mice and men on a back burner. So, we've been trying to do everything. We also then tried to look to see if we called an exclusive bus lane from where it opened up just in the vicinity of Inlet Road East to go to, Hill Station Road, to the east to get in as soon as they could into that turning lane. And we felt that would allow two, eastbound lanes of traffic and that one, a center lane leading into left turn lane. They didn't want that because of the access to the traffic and the considerations of community. So, we've been, we've been working to appease everybody much as we can. So, and-
What about-
So, what could we do, I guess?
Could you take the commercial traffic? I don't know how much of it is, there is at that point, but maybe bring that into the right lane so that at least you had the left lane was just passenger vehicles, might be moving a little bit faster, and buses in the left lane. Do you know what I mean?
We just, we looked at that. I guess what happened, and best of my recollection, correct me if I'm changing things, but the county had done some extensive studies over the last several years to determine what the peak hours were along County Route 39 and Route 27, and to see how far back the jams were occurring in the morning. Because they were occurring from 5:00 AM on to 9:30, but clearing up, as some of you may know, as you come to Town Hall, that after 9:30, it seems to break, and then you're able to keep moving. So-
And that lasts about 20 minutes and then comes the other way.
Well, your peak, what's your peak bus volume for this? Is it around 9:00 o'clock or?
Well, I mean, our peak timeframe, I mean, it's just the extended time, depending on who was playing.
So, you're right in the middle of it.
Yeah, right.
Right in the middle of it.
Though it does drop off a little bit after Memorial Day.
We'll hold you there.
Yep.
And the one thing we never know, I guess, two things we never know when you do a planned special event, is how much traffic is coming from the east. Because when they buy the tickets, they'll put their home address, which could be Nassau County or New York City, but they could be living in a region.
Yeah.
Right.
So, that was one to pick apart. And the second one is, those of us who may be in that commuting period, we also want to go to that event, you know? So, now, we're taking traffic out of there, which was the existing traffic out of the roadway. So, that's the things we never know. But what we'll be doing is we'll be monitoring that traffic flow each day through the entire course of the event. And if we see, in coordination with the police, that there's another plan that we can develop, that'll get them through. I guess sometimes the first concern is throughput, because most of the people are on the buses. And that's where you're going to carry it. So, the first concentration, as you suggested Jay, was to make sure that we're looking at the buses. The second one is that if you don't get the players there, you don't have an event, right? So, how do we do that? So, we've looked at playing, do we take them on Canal Route 39, or we bring them down on Montauk Highway? And that's the way the lots A, B, and C are going to be dropping off at the golf club, and they're going to be coming eastbound on Montauk Highway, and then making a left onto St. Andrews and coming up that way. So, we feel, I've given them the presence to be able to do what they want. And it's also the availability, if there wasn't a stoppage or something where the players couldn't get through it, there could be some help maybe from the police to get them through with, like, a little caravan. We haven't explored that yet, but we have to have a lot of thinking done, so we're not thinking on our feet at the time.
Do you know where the players are staying? Are they more east or more west, or divided down the middle?
They're just as confidential about it because they don't want people coming up to the door.
So, you really don't have any idea?
Well, our primary hotel blocks are in Riverhead.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was thinking. So, you're coming down 24, too, which is also a traffic. Is the U-turn closed off or only, only be accessible to eastbound traffic, the new U-turn they put in?
I'm glad you mentioned that, because that, of course, is in effect, which helps the right turn only people we were talking about earlier, if they're on the north side of the road or Shrubland, you can turn around, you know, maybe a quarter mile out back. And the other thing for vehicles on the south side of the road with the right turn only, you can turn around at Hubbard and McGee. In 2004, you were not allowed to make left turns at McGee. That's another change that we've made that will allow people that, if they can't make the left out of the road, they can make the right and turn around either at the turnaround on Sunrise or turn around at Hubbard.
Yeah, but it's on, whether it's our players, some of our fans, and our communication to them, our being kind of realistic with the times that it might take them. And certainly, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, for our players being that practice round, that they don't have, they're not held to start with that tee time, so they'll start to get familiar with that. But then I think also with our, with our team and this group collectively, if there's a, you know, public service announcement or media release to folks, it's kind of, if you don't have to travel this area, or if you have a house you're working on or need to be a week before or the week after, it's just, it's just as great. That's kind of all the things we're thinking about, is just really in the communication and really pushing people to utilize the Long Island Railroad as well.
The light in front of the Chinacock Hills at the college during that period, I think last year it was set on blink, wasn't it?
Same intention, flashing.
It'd be flash mode. Right. Because some people had commented during the last US Open, actually, the traffic was flowing better that period than normal. And I think that was a big piece of it. There were lights flashing. So, that'll be on blink? Any others on blink for it? McGee won't be blinking.
Sure, Tuckahoe Road at Canal Route 39, McGee made you want to-
Right, no, I understand that. But will any others be blinking? That's the only one. Okay. Well, that'll help.
So, that traffic coming up Tuckahoe, so they won't be able to make a right turn there coming west?
Tuckahoe's closed.
Totally closed. So-
Both sides.
They have to down to Tuckahoe Lane.
Okay, so you got to give me a map because now I'm completely lost. I can't get to Town Hall.
That's why you need all this notice, it's a lot.
I have actually mapped all of those 30 or so changes on map, number-coded them. Didn't show it today because I'm trying to figure out whether it's more confusing or less confusing to just go with the list, but-
Just need hospital lines, you know, painted on the road.
The last thing, you didn't ask the question, but I thought it might be the first one, is what's the operation on Canal Route 31? So, there we have, we're turning it into a four-lane roadway, right? Right now, it's one lane in each direction with the center turn lane. So, we're going to use the whole width to provide in the morning three southbound lanes and one northbound lane, and then we're going to reverse that at night to have the opposite.
What was the date that you guys were closing Tuckahoe Road, not through the golf course, but on the other side, the south side?
We're looking to match that with, with June 7th being the date that we'll have the merchandise preopening because that train would be in a-
So, June 7th would be the day that the light would start to blink then?
That's how I would, yes, sure.
I mean, I'm only asking, I mean, I've been actually pushing to get that light on blink from 6:00 to 8:00 in the morning now, because we've been seeing like two-hour backlogs, and I think it would really make a difference. But, you know, there's some people who go north-south there. If we could figure out how to-
And south-north.
Reroute some of those folks, because predominantly, and really predominantly 10,000 to one, you have traffic going east-west. But we, you know, I know that's something the chief has been looking at and working with the county to try to sort out. The traffic's been very bad, eastbound, early morning, 6:00 in the morning. That's, I don't, has nothing to do with the US Open, but it has everything to-
I love it too. I'm West Hampton to-
Yeah, we get it.
I know the times when it leave, when it's-
If you guys have any good suggestions about relieving that backlog, it's, it will subside a bit after Memorial Day, I think. But this run-up to Memorial Day is, it feels worse than last year. Maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but there's quite a bit of traffic there, so. A lot of, a lot of building activity.
Good luck to us all.
And a late spring.
Thank you.
And a late spring. Maybe it's a sign of a strong economy.
You guys did a lot of planning. This is a lot, a lot of work here.
All right, any other questions?
Like to be able to hold on to it and what you learned from it that we can maybe use for us.
The more we can publicize, once you finalize in advance, the better, just so people get used to the ideas of what's going to be the routes that are available, what the closures are going to be, because everyone's planning their schedules, kids, work, et cetera.
That's great. In addition, our whole, all the tickets that we've sold really have started last June. We'll start hitting mailboxes here shortly. With each of those tickets, every fan will have to receive a fan guide. I have one, I'll bring a stack over tomorrow of Sunday's papers anyways. But that, you know, has all the parking, transportation information to the general fan, as well as a prohibited items insert to, of course, let people know what they're not allowed to bring into the championship grounds. If you're not familiar, in '04, we did, we did not allow cell phones in '04. In 2015, that changed. So, all of our fans will have mobile devices up to seven inches, and all that information's in the fan guide. But in addition to what they will receive in person, now on our website, usopen.com, at the very top, there's a fan info page, which is updated with this more current information that just went, I guess, to public knowledge.
Okay. And if I could just, you know, this is, of course, going through the special event permit process. Cheryl, she's the primary farmer, she's the top. Cheryl, you want to just give the 30-second status of where we are on the special event permit?
Well, I think Monday's meeting will help us to wrap up a lot. We do have multi-branch, multi-agency meeting on Monday, just to make sure everybody's on the same page and that lines of communication are open. So, we are working within the incident command system. We're looking at doing the documentation, but things are pretty much on schedule. And USGA has been great to work with. They've been very, very good about getting us the information that we need quickly, so it's been a good process.
Thanks, Cheryl.
No, likewise, sunny Cheryl, perfect.
So, are you pretty much on schedule?
We are, and from our operational build, and that's why Tim is here, and really with the tents and working with our vendors, just like everyone, we have a late, some more nor'easters than we weren't used to. So, it might have worked a weekend or two before we, before we had intended. But I think, and that won't speak for you, Tim, but as far as the schedule of the overall build, I believe we're, we're on time.
Was there an issue, somebody had asked me about New York State, they have their own mass gathering permit, like we do?
In Suffolk County.
Yeah, through the county.
And we've been working with them. Monday's meeting includes them, so we're making sure that everybody-
Yeah, there's an incident action plan that's filed with the mass gathering permit and working with Bob Delaghi.
That's getting put together?
Getting put together.
Okay.
It's been being put together, and now we're going to let them all connect.
He's been the lead on this for the last two, so we're dealing with a lot of experience, which really has helped.
And that's the meeting coming up on Monday?
It's an internal meeting between the captain and his branch managers from EOD, Fire, EMS Traffic.
Bob Delaghi will be there, I'll see.
Bob Delaghi as well, as well as from the county inspector in charge. But that will be intentional. We have plans for each of those branch managers, and, but the permit requires an overall document that we've been putting off. Now, we just need to put them all together, and that's what we'll kind of sit down one day and put it all together in one document so we can submit to the county and state.
Okay.
I have one quick question. If actually it's probably for, directed towards the town attorney, we have a mutual aid agreement between all the towns and villages. Do you feel that this large-scale event would fit the criteria to request their assistance?
Sure.
Yeah, and I spoke with the chief about that.
Yeah, I'm already, I already put the feelers out.
It's already out.
It's 99.
Yes, I'll just save it there.
Okay. There's another IVA between the town and the county as far as the, you mentioned the road with the County Route 31, 39, is a county at present, a resolution, jurisdiction, the county's going to be doing, the town's going to be overseeing.
All right, well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
So, good luck with the event. Let us know if you can be helpful.
That's my pleasure.
Oh, he's going to be helpful.
Can I keep this?
You can. I'll bring back.
I can be completely helpful.
We're at least committing on Monday.
Thank you, guys. Nice meeting you.
I'm checking to see what's wrapped up.
Yeah, it's a slightly different, different role here.
You want this?
No.
Those kids are great.
I'm taking one of my mugs.
It's one of the things I really love doing. I know, it's really great, yeah. And I stay in touch with a lot of them, and I sort of follow their progress. I got one kid's going to Cardigan, emailing, and now he's working on a meeting, and I realize how long I've been doing this. But it's, it's amazing, you know?
Yeah.
It is. All right, so board, that really concludes our agenda for today's work session. We do have executive session.